It seemed to be recently, we've been having a lot of meetings before we come here and close sessions, and we had two tonight, well, actually, we had one tonight. And we have nothing to report on on those because they're usually dealing with litigation, which we can't report out on. So with that, I would like to welcome you all, and we'll start with the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, and means over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past, present, and as well as our future generations. The acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. And with that, I would like to ask you if you'd like to join us at the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Well, we'll go on to ceremonial matters, and this evening, we have a proclamation recognizing September 21st, 2025 as the International Day of Peace, and Councilmember Stacy Atkinson-Salazar will read that.
Thank you.
Whereas, the International Day of Peace was established by the United Nations in 1981 as an annual observance with September 21st set as a day of nonviolence and ceasefire in 2001. The theme for 2025 is Act Now for a Peaceful World. And whereas, we all have a role to play in creating peace by speaking up against violence, hate, discrimination, and inequality, practicing respect and embracing diversity while listening to voices different from our own, and verifying facts before passing them on. And whereas, the United Nations invites all governments, nations, and communities to end conflicts and instead promote peace and harmony through actions supporting sustainable development, human rights for all, and peaceful solutions for conflicts. We can strengthen a culture of peace by seeking to understand ourselves and others, especially across different cultures, nations, and faiths, and celebrating our differences to create a more connected, peaceful, and healthy world as history has shown is possible. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes September 21st, 2025 as the International Day of Peace, and encourages the community to work together to end racism, religious conflicts, and war, and create lasting peace for all, locally and globally. We reaffirm our commitment to protecting the rights of migrants and people of all genders in this sanctuary city and to honoring diversity, equity, and dignity for all. And today, that will be accepted by Lynda Evans from Humboldt's Women's International League for Peace and Freedom.
I know you have a full agenda, so I appreciate the time here and totally appreciate the support that the city has provided to us year after year in recognizing and honoring an International Day of Peace. Wanted to invite folks to, on, this year, it's on a Sunday, September the 21st, it's always on September the 21st. So we have been partnering with Central del Pueblo, and they'll have a spot, a table during North Country Fair, on one of the corners, I'm not sure which one, I think it's the northwest corner, but I can't swear to that. And so we're asking people to drop by there and write down what their thoughts are about peace, and then we'll compile those and maybe bring them back to you as a city council so you can see what the community is saying and thinking about peace. And then later on, at six o'clock, we're gathering outside of the Arcata Playhouse to have a more intimate conversation because it gets a little chaotic during North Country Fair. I love it as much as I do, but it's hard to hold peaceful conversations in the midst of frivolity. Not that you can't have frivolity with peace, but, so I want to invite anyone who is interested to come and join us at six o'clock on that same evening on Sunday. And then tonight, we're co-sponsoring a movie at the Minor Theater with Shine a Light on Palestine, so I'll make a pitch about that. It starts at seven, the title of is The Palestine Exception. It's a documentary about the experience of students as they were showing support for Palestine and the experiences that they had about a year and a half ago, two years ago, whenever that erupted. So, anyway, thank you again, council, for your support of the International Day of Peace.
Our next proclamation is recognizing September 2025 as the Community Unity, Pride, and Peace Month, and Councilmember Kimberly White will read that.
Whereas, Community, Pride, and Peace, or CPP, was formed with local support almost seven years ago to create five solution teams to address and agree upon problems. And whereas, Community, Pride, and Peace has a mission: inspire pride and peace in our community by putting solutions into action. Through unity and respect, our mission is to bring our communities locally and globally together to create and be the positive change we want to see in the world. And whereas, Community, Pride, and Peace has partnered with other local nonprofits and businesses to create events, clean up neighborhoods, share local resources, connect various organizations to solve problems together, and to feature local leaders. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata, in recognition of Community, Pride, and Peace, does hereby recognize the month of September 2025 as Community, Pride, and Peace Month in the City of Arcata, and urges the Arcata community to support these efforts. And this is dated September 3rd, 2025. Alexandra Stillman, our mayor, and will be received by Ken Hammack.
It was actually 10 years ago, and it started with a parade in our community called Yes We Can, C-A-N-N Parade. And this last weekend, we just had Canfest in Halverson Park, and thousands of people, upwards of 4,000, came to just have fun in our community. And we decided that be the change you want to be in the world was something 10 years ago, we didn't see always every corner, especially Arcata Plaza. And so we started showing up, cleaning up, looking out for each other, working with the City of Arcata on safety issues and things like that. So I just wanted to just take a few words to acknowledge some of the other founders that aren't here, Steve Gieder, Lori Cosgrove, Sasha Mixes. Luke, Officer Luke, has been really a pillar on the plaza since we started, and really appreciate Joanne. Joanne's been, Paul, other people here have been a part of what we've been trying to do. And I think as a futurist, coming here about that same time to Humboldt with my family, it's that blessing and curse we know so well, may you live in interesting times. Well, if 2025 isn't that, I don't know what it is, but I would rather be no place else in the world right now than in this community. We have powerful voices, we talk with each other, for the most part, we get along, but I just really believe in the next generations coming out of that campus across the way up there to really do some amazing things with this community. And I guess I would just say in ending that we believe that it takes a community to build the future, and this is a really good community to start with. Thank you so much for this proclamation, and Kimberly in particular, Akuna, has been a real partner in Valley West. We've been proud to kind of work alongside you when we could to make that neighborhood really proud and amazing. Thank you so much, Alex, and Meredith, and all of you guys, for all your support, and very much appreciated. Thank you.
And thank you. Our next proclamation is in recognition of Queer Community and Culture Awareness Month, September 2025. Councilmember Sarah Schaefer will be reading that. Thank you.
In recognition of Queer Community and Culture Awareness Month, September 2025. Whereas recent and as well as historic events in our own community have shown and emphasized how all people are affected by violations against those belonging to any marginalized group of people, it is extremely important for these underserved peoples and their allies to support each other. There are still many people that are being marginalized, isolated, and underrepresented despite one of our community's greatest strengths being our rich and vivid diversity of peoples and cultures. And whereas, the City of Arcata celebrates the value, culture, and contributions of the queer community, people, and the community as a whole, as well as recognizing the challenges and struggles of the community, of the queer community are akin to those that people in other marginalized groups have faced where their beliefs and cultures have been threatened. And such as, Redwood Pride invites all people from the City of Arcata, Humboldt County, as well as surrounding areas to celebrate our unique, diverse, and colorful community with the Redwood Pride Pride O'Ween Festival and evening celebrations to be held in Eureka in October. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes September 2025 as Queer Community and Culture Awareness Month here in the City of Arcata. And that is dated today, September 3rd, and signed by Mayor Alex Stillman. And we have April here from Redwood Pride to accept this proclamation.
First, just like to say thank you again for the proclamation. It's always appreciated, and always thank you for the support and ongoing support that we've had and going forth in the community here. It's been very helpful at times. And as mentioned here, that we are having our Pride O'Ween celebration in Eureka. We're still working out some of the details, but it'll probably be either the weekend before or the weekend, before the weekend before Halloween. We're still assessing all the details on that. But it'll be a community festival, and we'll have an all ages show as well as an 18-plus show. And that's more or less all I've got at the moment. Other than, thank you again.
Thank you. Well, this evening, we're going to have a report by a commission or committee, and this case, it's our annual report from our energy committee. And I think Michael Winkler is going to be the chair of the committee and going to be doing the report, and thank you for coming to this evening.
I'm the chair of the City of Arcata Energy Committee. And we talk about a lot of environmental issues, and the energy, which is the field that I work in professionally, is the area that's most near and dear to my heart. As far as accomplishments, one thing that we're continuing is the All Electric Initiative. What we're trying to do is to encourage the transition from fossil fuels to electricity and for the electricity to come from renewable sources. So that Arcata has been able to get a grant from the Energy Conservation Assistance Act to do retrofits of the streetlights. We also have been able to change water heaters on city facilities from natural gas to electricity. And we also are working with funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. And we received a presentation from a city engineer in Etricontree on city plans and actions for greenhouse gas reduction with electrification. The committee has also collaborated with a number of outside agencies, especially with Redwood Coast Energy Authority on various projects. And we also are starting to get intensively into the county's regional climate action plan, and we're focusing on things that the city can do and how we can get actions of the city to be in sync with what's happening at the county level on the climate action plan. We also were dealing with the issue of biomass, which has been a very controversial issue within the county. And earlier this year, representing the committee, I presented to the city council and recommended that the city take no action as far as biomass, and the city did take no action. As far as future goals for the coming year, we will continue working on the climate action plan, and we will be emphasizing transportation mode shift from single-occupy vehicles, fossil-fuel-powered vehicles, and shifting to electricity. And also for people to be using public transportation more and using bicycling. We will continue on the All Electric Initiative, and we will continue working in supporting staff on their energy-related actions. And we also are going to be having a new state energy code starting the first of the year called the 2025 Code, and so we will be working with city staff on helping the city get in sync with the new state energy code. And we will continue our actions on things related to climate change and greenhouse gas reduction and other aspects of energy. So any questions from the council on this?
Thank you very much, council. Questions?
No questions, but thank you for your continued work on that and your other endeavors in our community. We appreciate you and the committee.
Yeah, at the same time, I gave the report last year, I also received a certificate of recognition from the council on graffiti elimination, and I've continued that very intensively, and you've probably seen me around town.
It's been fantastic what you've done. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. I've established a regular patrol route that goes all the way from Samoa Boulevard up to past Spear Avenue, and I patrol that weekly, and recently, I removed about 150 graffiti tags and stickers within a week. And I also, my patrol route also covers the entire city, including Valley West, and so I rotate through all the other neighborhoods of Arcata on a continuing basis so that in a period of four to six weeks, I remove graffiti in all areas of Arcata.
And you're in great shape now because of it, right?
Well, thank you.
It was great to see you. I just wanted to add one thing about the energy committee and all the work you've done about thinking about fossil fuel and going to electric. And so some 22 years ago, when I put in washer and dryers, they were all gas and gas. And so now, it's got me, when I have to replace them, to replace them all in electric. So I really want to thank you for changing people's minds. I hope more people's minds have been changed just than mine. So thank you very much for the work that your committee's done. So we'll go on to staff reports, and the first staff report we have is to receive an update from the city engineer, Nature Cadre, regarding the city's South Arcata multimodal safety improvement plan. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and member of the public. We are here to give you a quick update on our SAMCEP, which stands for South Arcata Multimodal Safety Improvement Plan. We have been working on this for the last 18 months, and we have our project team via Zoom who will be giving an overview of what we've been doing for the last 18 months. But before I introduce them and start, I just want to give you a quick background on the project. This project, mainly the intersection of Samoa 255 and US 101, has been in the books for maybe more than 10 years. We applied for multiple grants, we are not successful. However, in 2023, through Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant, we were able to secure some planning funds, and that's how we started this project. As you know, south of Seventh Street, there's only one bridge, Samoa 255, which connects East and West Arcata, and that bridge lacks bicycle and pedestrian facility. So the people who live in Sunnybri, if they have to recreate or do some recreation activity at the marsh or the trail, they have to go through downtown. They don't have a direct path. So the main goal of this project is to connect East and West Arcata by adding bicycle and pedestrian transportation in the south of Arcata. And lastly, this project is part of Reconnect Arcata Project, which is, which main goal of that project is to connect East and West Arcata, which has been bicycled by US 101. So with that, I'm going to introduce our project team here. I believe we have Todd Trigandza and Rosanna from GHD, who will be going over the project. So Todd, can you hear us?
I can. I hope you can hear and see us all right.
We can see you, and we can see your slides. I believe you can control that, so floor is yours, and people are ready and excited to hear about the project.
All right. Thank you, Nature, for that wonderful introduction. I'm sorry, I'm looking for my mouse. Okay.
Do you want to wait just a moment? Oh, there, it's coming on now. Thank you very much. Go ahead, please.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, my name is Rosanna Severn, and Todd Trigandza is here as well. We are with the consultant team at GHD, and we'll be discussing the project. The acronym that we're using is SAMCEP, South Arcata Multimodal Improvement Plan. And the partners that we've collaborated with on these plans are Save Arcata, Caltrans, the Humboldt County Association of Governments, and as well, teaming with us, also was Redwood Community Action Agency. And I'm going to give a shout out to the project task force that was involved with the development of the project. They attended a lot of project meetings and helped drive engagement throughout the project. So tonight, we have a lot to discuss, so I'm just going to go ahead and dive right into it. So a plan overview, what, where is the plan exactly? As Nature mentioned, the SAMCEP interchange is one of the projects, so there are two concurrent but separate projects. The interchange includes Samoa Boulevard at 101 between F Street and Union Street, and then Samoa Boulevard and South G Beautification and Safety Improvement Plan is, entails Samoa Boulevard between B Street and F Street, and then South G between Samoa down to the city yard. One thing I want to mention is that, as Nature had mentioned, these long-term plans are part of a larger vision to reconnect communities throughout Arcata, and we are really excited to be a part of that. These are images of the three roadways. They are very different in terms of travel characteristics, however, they are all important connections for South Arcata. Here's our project timeline. We began a process in spring last year assessing existing conditions. We involved the community early on. We set up a project task force for advocates and community members who wanted to be more involved, and we maintained a project website throughout the plan's development. We had two public workshops, a community walking tour along the corridor, and a pop-up demonstration project, and we planned to reach out to local schools to provide educational information and obtain their input on how children and parents feel about the proposed plan. We have draft recommendations to share with you tonight and plan to finalize both these plans this winter. So I'll walk through the need and purpose of the plan. So the goals for these projects include increasing connectivity and access, making streets safer for people, increasing active modes, and providing for those with disabilities, creating a gateway into Arcata by slowing vehicle speeds from the freeway and from 255 in the west, beautifying these corridors to enhance the quality of life, sorry, and reducing car trips. We did an existing conditions analysis that began by identifying existing infrastructure and gaps in multimodal connectivity, key points of interest. We evaluated collision data and bicycle level of traffic stress, and identified opportunities and constraints along these corridors that assisted with development of alternatives. What we found was that existing, the existing interchange was built to prioritize vehicles. The current configuration provides way more capacity than needed today or in the future. There is a lack of safe and connected pedestrian and bike facilities across the interchange, as well as the bike lanes along Samoa Boulevard and South G Street fail to meet the conditions that can be relatively high speed and result in a high-stress environment for those wanting to bike or walk along those streets. The bike lanes are also faded, and a lot of times are being used as parking lanes instead. Crossing Samoa Boulevard can be challenging and a barrier to cyclists going down the marsh and other locations. The collision history showed several pedestrian and bicycle-related collisions at Samoa and South G and H Street. These corridors have some constraints regarding the existing right-of-way and road widths, but this plan takes advantage of the opportunity to reconnect the communities and to reconnect the communities. and to existing trails, parks, businesses, and improve safety by reassigning some of the road to active transportation facilities. So I'll go through the first round of community engagement that we did. It entailed a workshop to introduce the project and obtain input on what people loved about Arcata in terms of transportation, what they wished for and what they wondered about. The project website had an interactive comment map for community members to provide similar comments. And a survey was solicited to obtain input on community priorities and transportation conditions, where we asked people to rank which features they wanted to see more of. And what we found out from all of this was that the community placed a priority on walkability, bikeability, and safety. Combining the community's input with the existing conditions technical analysis led to the development of various alternatives for the plan, which Todd will go through in the next slides.
Thank you very much, Rosanna. One thing I'll mention is some of the input we got speaks more generally to Arcaden's transportation priorities and aspirations in addition to specific input about South G and Samoa Boulevard and US 101. And so our public engagement, reporting out at the end of the project, will have data about what your citizens are thinking about and talking about that will hopefully even outlive the purpose of that engagement for this project. So I'm going to start with a few different, what we're calling an improvement toolkit. And these were, you know, they're obviously an unlimited number of transportation improvements that can be implemented on corridors like this. And so internally, we screened out what could be appropriate in this area, both on Samoa Boulevard, South G, and on the interchange structure itself. And so this ranges from things that can be quite complex and expensive and lengthy to implement, things like landscape medians, chicanes, where you're moving drainage facilities, things that involve concrete, to more rapid build, things like bike lanes, new crosswalks, even flexible delineators to provide buffered bike lanes with protection from, from, from parallel traffic and speed feedback signs, things like that. The city has, you know, the ability to implement independently, and could be some near-term action items that can be undertaken. We also wanted to look at landscaping and beautification. Many of these improvements have co-benefits. These can be traffic calming as well as beautification. And one thing we definitely heard, both in interacting with the community on the walking tour and on the online surveys, is that, you know, folks that live in Arcata really do value and prioritize that connection to the natural environment. And along South G, a good example of that is trying to extend that experience of being out on the marsh and on the trails into the neighborhoods a little bit and providing some better seamless access to those recreational facilities. Okay, and I'm going to go relatively quickly through alternatives, because we can always come back to them when there are questions. But I want to get to, we have, we have a bunch of slides here. I want to make sure we get to all of them. So I'm going to start with the interchange. This is, you know, a cloverleaf interchange, as, you know, the shape of it from, from the aerial view kind of denotes. It looks a bit like a clover, and it provides really free movement to every vehicle that's exiting or entering the freeway or Samoa Boulevard. And so this is a relatively high-capacity type of interchange. This is something you may see from a freeway-to-freeway connection or a highway-to-highway connection. And really, when we're talking about the level of traffic that's on Samoa Boulevard and anticipated along Samoa Boulevard in the future, this type of interchange is frankly overbuilt for the, for the, for the context. So we looked at two intersection control types for the ramp intersections of the future, whatever those, wherever those may, may lie. One is roundabouts, and we have three different alternatives here. And in fact, there are dozens of different configurations, but I'm going to highlight some of the trade-offs in these three, and then for the traffic signals as well. So alternative one on the far left shows a shared-use path. So something that cyclists and pedestrians can both use on the north side of the existing bridge. And you can see on the cross-section below that it fits within the current bridge width, and that's a big benefit. We've got 50 feet out there, and if we're able to prevent the need to widen that bridge or build an additional new bridge structure, where it's a tremendous cost-saving and really can accelerate implementation of anything that we do here. Alternative two is a variation of this, where we have a shared-use facility on the north side, but also a sidewalk on the south. That was based on some community feedback that we heard that we would like to try to keep bikes and pedestrians separate. And what you'll see here on the diagram up top is that, that one drawback here is whereas on, on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the uninterrupted path, it doesn't conflict with any of the ramp movements on or off at the intersection. If you introduce a sidewalk on the south side, you do introduce crossings of the roundabout. Alternative three is a more traditional cross-section that you might see on, on an interchange, where we have on-street bike lanes as well as sidewalks on each side. Again, certainly an improvement over what's out there today, but introducing conflict points for cyclists and pedestrians on where they cross the ramp intersections. Okay, getting into traffic signals, things get a little bit more different. We have alternative four on the left, which tries to preserve that same uninterrupted Class 1 trail on the north side. However, by shifting all the ramps to the south, you introduce the need for a left-turn storage lane, where cars can stop at the red light and wait for their turn to turn left off of Samoa and back onto 101 southbound. And so in essence, you need a three-lane cross-section along the bridge to accommodate this, and that would require widening. That'd be quite an expensive improvement, and we'll definitely weigh into the alternative selection criteria that we'll get to later. Alternative five also has a shared-use trail on the north side, but you'll see that it's not a three-lane cross-section. And so what we did here is we kept the southbound ramps on the north side of Samoa. And so if you want to go south on Samoa, you would, from, from the east, you would come along, and then you would turn right rather than having to stack and turn left. However, again, like in the roundabout options, what this does is it introduces a conflict point at the intersection itself, where folks have to cross oncoming and exiting traffic onto the highway. Alternative six kind of mirrors alternative three, where we have on-street bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides of the street. Okay, getting to South G and Samoa Boulevard, I'm going to start with Samoa Boulevard. We looked at two main alternatives. There is a third I'll get to in a second, kind of a no-build option. But alternative one would be an extension of that trail, that shared-use trail that we talked about in the last few slides. And you would carry that from the end of the interchange, let's call it F Street, all the way to V Street, right, all the way across the Eureka Bay Trail crossing along Samoa at the railroad. And you would keep it all on the north side. This has some benefits in providing that continuity of travel, but it also poses some challenges in that it's an unfamiliar type of facility. People aren't used to having a two-way trail like that, side by side along the street in the city of Arcata. And you would also need additional traffic signal hardware to control the flow of bicycles, when, especially when they're moving opposite the flow of traffic, if you can visualize that in your head. You'd have bikes going east and vehicles going west and turning out of the street, so there are some complexities involved in that. Alternative two is, provides a equivalent level of protection for the cyclists. We would have them protected from the vehicles by either a curb, bring them up to sidewalk height, or, you know, delineators, and the details of all of that separation and protection are not fully resolved in this. As Rosanna mentioned, this is more of a vision document. But in this example, we would have the bikes going east and west on, quote, "their" side of the street, right? So alongside, parallel to the, the traffic moving in the same direction. And we'd have crossover points in this alternative at F Street and at the Bay Trail Crossing. Also note that in both of these options, there is a segment of Samoa Boulevard that has two eastbound lanes between F and H, essentially. To get all of this into the cross-section, the right-of-way that you have available, it is most likely that, that, that two-block segment would have to be reduced to one eastbound lane, which is consistent with Samoa Boulevard west of H, but something to note. Alternative three is what I call kind of the no-build alternative. And this, we would not have to reduce that travel lane, right? We would work with the existing travel lanes that are out there and essentially try to make it work around the edges of what's out there and make it as good as possible. And when I say that, I don't mean to diminish the opportunity. We could certainly look at bull bouts. We could look at bike boxes and bike lanes and landscaping. And so you could still do a good, really make a good improvement out there, but you wouldn't be able to get that level of protection that we were showing in the last two slides that physically separates cyclists from the motoring public. But you would gain the preservation essentially of that second eastbound lane. Okay, and last but not least, on Samoa, we're also looking at west of the existing Eureka Bay Trail Crossing, continuing a two-way, you know, rural recreational trail out west towards where the future Great Redwood Trail would connect out ultimately to Manila. And we do have some traffic calming and gateway elements, which are shown on this screen. One of the concerns, again, Rosanna highlighted earlier in the presentation, high-speed traffic entering from the west into town. And so we want to look at opportunities to start signaling to people that, hey, you're about to hit Arcata. You're about to hit a trail crossing, and, and we need you to slow down. You're entering an urbanized area. Right now, it's really lacking any kind of visual signal of that transition from rural highway, high-speed rural highway into a town. And so we want to reinforce that, as well as introduce some additional elements throughout the corridor to maintain that traffic calming environment and protect cyclists and pedestrians at the intersections to facilitate that crossing of Samoa Boulevard. Okay, on South G, if Samoa Boulevard were constrained, then South G is super constrained, right? There's not a lot of room out there, especially north of Front Street. And Front Street, I think some folks identify it as F Street. It's kind of the extension of F, where it intersects the extension of, just south of the extension of H, right? And so north of there is the more built-up part of South G. And we have really two options without requiring additional right-of-way. There was desire, I think, to fully separate the bikes and, you know, really try to create similar treatments to what we talked about on Samoa, but that's simply not feasible without, while maintaining the other uses of the street, not feasible without significantly widening the road and, you know, the inherent complications that come with that, notably right-of-way takes. So we looked at two options that could be done within the existing right-of-way and within the existing curb-to-curb width. One is traditional Class 2 bike lanes, alternative one. Two, we tighten up the travel lanes a little bit more, 10 and 1/2 feet per direction, but we're able to get a buffer in the bike lane. And so while that's not a physical separation, it does provide more visual delineation of where bikes and vehicles should be, as well as by narrowing the lanes just that little bit extra, then the other alternative does provide some traffic calming benefit. South of Front Street, or F Street, we, we have a little bit more room. It opens up. We've got the marsh on the west and unimproved frontages on the east. And so in there, we're able to look at a little bit more creative options. And so the first option is to put a shared-use facility. Only bikes are shown there, but really it's for walking and bikes on the east side, and also have a bike lane on the west side that would also double as a road shoulder. But you would have bike facilities on each side, as well as a sidewalk, shared-use path on, on the east, which would connect to Redwood Curtain and other destinations on the east. Alternative two would provide buffered bike lanes and a sidewalk on the east only. Again, kind of adjacent to where the businesses are. Similar to Samoa, but perhaps even slightly more important here, because there is less traffic control, is traffic calming measures. And so starting from the north, we want to introduce kind of a 400-foot frequency of drivers encountering a traffic calming device of some sort. And really what we're talking about here is an engineered something that provides a signal that we need to maintain a calm and slow travel speed. And so we, we've thought about and talked with the community about where those locations could be placed. Third Street makes a lot of sense, as it's already an intersection. And then somewhere between Third and the community park would, would be another location to maintain that spacing that would be adjacent to private homes. And then reinforcing the existing crossing you have already on South G with a raised crosswalk to not only really visually highlight anybody that wants to cross the street, but also provide that vertical slowdown, the vertical deflection, as we call it. We again have a traffic calming measure we recommend at Front or F Street. There's already some traffic calming at, at H, and so this would provide another opportunity to slow people down. And in almost all of these, we would also be talking about, with the exception of this mid-block one, the ability to cross the street. So again, trying to carry that theme of reducing the roadways as, as barriers to east-west connectivity or north-south connectivity. That becomes really important further south, where we want to connect, as I mentioned earlier, folks to the businesses on the east, to the community on the east, but also down into the trail system, right? That outdoors environment around the marsh and the trail network that's being built out along it. And so finding opportunities to not only slow vehicles, but get people on and off the trail safely to other destinations, so that they're not just driving to the trail to use the trail, but using it as a part of getting from point A to point B. Hope I'm doing all right on time. We're getting there. Workshop two, another round of workshops. And I will say, between all of our engagement, we probably got 400, 500 public comments. So lots of online comments in addition to the in-person workshops. And workshop two is where we got to come back to the community with those alternatives I just presented and get some good feedback on how to refine them. And I'll talk about that in a couple of examples in the next few slides. We also did a pop-up. Unfortunately, we were, the, the weather was not really in our favor. Yet nonetheless, it was a success. We had people out there testing out what protected bikeways could feel like in using them in the city of Arcata. And so that was a fun activity to get out there for those that were able to brave the weather and talk about the project and drive additional engagement to our workshops. All right, recommended alternatives. So alternative one, we created a matrix, and this is a really important part of a, what's called a project study report, which is Caltrans language is essentially for a scoping document, which is able, it's really important in, in, in our ability to move this project beyond this planning phase that we're in right now into a fundable, constructable project. And so as part of that, you need to show an alternatives analysis, and, and this matrix serves that function. And it demonstrates really why we landed on alternative one for the interchange. It checks all the boxes, meets our purpose and need. And really, when you look at, at the other options or other good options, but this was the only one with, with check marks and positive accomplishment of, of all the metrics that we had in there. One adjustment that we did make, though, to alternative one, I mentioned earlier, in workshop two, we heard really a strong desire to separate the bicycles and the pedestrians and not have them just on one facility. And so you can see that outside of the bridge section, which is really constrained, and we will have to mix bikes and peds, outside of that, we've provided for a separated sidewalk from the trail. And so that's one example of the two that I'll give for public input really did influence our project recommendations. For Samoa Boulevard, we chose alternative two. And, and this was, the, the, the community input here was really in providing those directional facilities, the desire not to have bikes moving in two directions of traffic along the north side of the road. And so when you look at that alternative here, these function very similar to traditional bike lanes. And so it's not unusual or unknown or uncomfortable to, to folks that are out there, but they have the added benefit of being protected from the moving vehicles. And that can be accomplished either by a fixed bollard of some sort, a raised curb, or in some cases, we may look at even raising the bike lane up to sidewalk level or close to sidewalk level with a, a physical curb between it and moving traffic. Those details need to be defined, refined as the project continues to develop. We also want to preserve all the investments the city has made on the north side of the street. That was another important part of. That was another important part of um our project and alternative development process is we wanted to avoid anything that um uh uh put at risk uh the landscape and streetscape improvements that have been made to the north side. But from there, south, this would involve full reconstruction. We recommend the buffered bike lanes on Front Street, um, although they tighten the travel lanes a little bit narrower than um maybe some uh drivers are used to, uh, it's certainly within the realm of, of, of best practices. Uh, we can go to ten-foot travel lanes if needed, and so we're, we're right there. Um, and with the two-foot buffered bike lane uh striping, that um provides really good visual cue of where the cyclist should be as well as uh that traffic calming benefit of narrowing the road a little bit. Uh, I will also say that on South G, the, the most important thing we heard was pavement condition. And uh, so it, all, all of this on South G would involve a full resurf- resurfacing of the street, fresh asphalt and getting rid of that kind of split uh pavement surface, if any of you are ki- are familiar with it, where you move from the old concrete section that's about twenty feet wide to the kind of redded asphalt. And so fresh, you know, uh, uh, flat surface will go a long way towards making that a comfortable experience. South of Front Street, we recommend the Class One Trail uh on the east side along with, and really important here, along with those crossing points and traffic calming points where you can, you know, create penetration across, across South G into the marsh uh from the trail. And so what does that result in? So from a level of traffic stress uh perspective, and really that when we talk about barriers and connectivity, that's what we're talking about. Um, you can see that in the existing condition, uh Samoa Boulevard is either orange or red, which is a high level of stress. Uh, it, South G itself is actually relatively stressful. Um, and you can see that with our project uh implemented, we eliminate that. Uh, the bright green is because we're recommending the fully separated uh bikeway along Samoa Boulevard, uh, which is the lowest stress level you can get. On, on South G, south of F or Front Street, we have that shared-use path which gets us a low-stress facility. Uh, north of there, we have level of traffic stress two, uh, which is still considered low-stress. Uh, but because it's only bike lanes on the street and uh not a separated facility, you know, folks like myself with young kids may, you know, weave onto H Street or, or, or another facility, or maybe onto the trail rather than taking G. But for ninety percent of riders, uh, you know, that's going to be a, a, a big improvement over what's out there today. And um, but it may not capture all comfort levels, if that makes sense. Okay, uh, next step. So, last three slides, I promise I'm almost done. Uh, I do want to just touch on different funding opportunities. Obviously, this is all going to be expensive. Um, there are federal programs that we're building, or we're, we're, we're writing about in our report and, and what may or may not be uh eligible or competitive against these programs, state programs. Uh, active transportation program is one that uh it could, could be a good candidate for. Um, so we'll explore that further as we uh wrap up the final chapters of, of the report. Uh, but we are trying to make sure that the city is in a good position to pursue. Um, uh, whether it's uh Caltrans funding or competitive programming, um, funding to, to make this a reality. As I mentioned earlier, there are some near-term projects that can be implemented possibly without that federal or state money, and we're going to identify and uh separate those out so that we can have some near-term action items. Last but not least, we have a draft implementation schedule. So this is what we're writing into that scoping document I referred to earlier, the PSR document. Uh, so this is all tentative, uh, but uh it's a, for, for planning purposes, this is what we're suggesting is a possible implementation schedule, um, with essentially project completion by twenty twenty-nine, let's call it twenty thirty, uh, within five years, provided funding can be secured. Uh, we think that this is a, a, a realistic uh 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 construction schedule, uh, but it will take work and continued advocacy and championing of this project uh to move it forward. With that, I will uh take a breath of fresh air and uh take any questions that you might have.
So, um, I, I do know that we have people in the audience that I'm sure that have participated in this and are we able to take public comment from anybody on this? If there are a few po- pardon me?
It, it's just a staff report, so we're not seeking public comment at this time.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to have to make you wait for public comment to our oral communications, which is coming up. So council members, uh, shall we start with you, Sarah? And start at this end?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. We've been working on this for a while. It looks great. It's great to see, you know, everything written up, and I'm excited about it. I hope we can get some funding.
Um, yes, same. Uh, I think it's beautiful, comprehensive, amazing. And I know that we will have lots of folks in the community that will want to make comments and suggestions, as will we when we get to that. But in addition, I just want to thank staff for these projects. When I, I've been on council about five years, and my, one of my very first big votes was the Old Arcata Road Improvement Project. And we've just had um one project after another, making our community safer, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Meredith, and?
No, that was amazing. Thank you so much. Um, I know it's far off into the distance, but when we are thinking about beautification, I just want to keep wayfaring signage in mind. You know, I've been on some beautiful walking paths in Bend and other cities that really go out of their way to make these beautiful walkable and bikeable paths. Um, have some informational and have some directional and some branding, and I think that would be really important addition. But thank you so much. I'm really excited.
Thank you. Kimberly?
Um, that was an excellent presentation. I'm hoping we can get a copy of that PowerPoint if possible. Um, and I am very interested in some of those near-term projects that would be able to move forward without both state and federal funding, especially with the uh reconnecting communities, bad news that we have received. Um, and I, I love your idea of the wayfaring signs. Um, yeah, it's, it's a perfect fit for Arcata. And so, yeah, thank you so much for that incredible presentation.
And thank you, and I, um, one of the things I always notice is landscaping, and there are trees in this. And um, we also have that on this other part of Samoa Boulevard that's closer. Also, it'd be H, uh, going towards K. And there's landscape strips in there, but there is actually nothing growing there anymore, maybe weeds, because there is no water. And so for whatever we do, I would like to encourage that they look at how we're going to have some kind of system to provide water for any landscaping. So thank you, and it'll be exciting to see it happen, and I really appreciate it, and thank you very much. Okay, so with that, we'll go on to our, receive an update from Lieutenant Luke Scowar regarding the city's community ambassador program, and then we'll go to oral communications, and we'll have, if you want to speak at that time. Thank you.
Oh, it's not on. Good evening, council members and general public. Thank you for being here. Uh, my name is Luke Scow. I'm a lieutenant with the Arcata Police Department, and I'm here to give you an update on the community ambassador program. Uh, so this is our community ambassadors, uh, minus one. One of them was out on vacation, and so they were not here. Uh, but this is uh Misha, Miwa, uh, Leona, uh, Royal, and Andrew. Uh, they are comprised our community ambassadors at this point. A question that I'm often asked, and they're often asked, is, is what is a community ambassador? What do they do? Uh, and so this is from our lead ambassador, Royal Hunter. Uh, this is her kind of general description of, of what they do. Uh, and so community ambassadors are a group of kind and compassionate individuals. We engage with all of our residents here in Arcata and take pride in connecting visitors and locals to all Arcata has to offer. Uh, I, I think this fits perfectly with uh what they do and their mission and, and the things that they uh are working on. Uh, there are, uh, you know, there's a whole laundry list of things that they do. Um, it's not just this. They often, uh, we often hear that they're just out there picking up litter. Um, that's not just all they do. Uh, they do a whole lot more than that. Uh, they, uh, they do do that, and that's great. But they are really one of the biggest uh things that I see them providing to this community is they're a bridge. They're a bridge uh between the general public and uh the city and other service providers out there, uh, like Arcata House and uh different agencies that they work closely with, that they can help connect people with who may not know uh when or where to meet with them, uh, and they can make those connections. Uh, they're out there in public, and they form relationships, and they, uh, they really bolt, build those bridges and are liaisons uh between the city uh and everyone out there. Uh, they also can just provide general information. If you want to know where to, you know, go to eat, they can help you with that too. Uh, but they can also help you with uh how to get a voucher to get a new ID from DMV. Uh, they know how to, to arrange these things. They're not, uh, they're not in positions where they actively do these things, which makes it um feasible for us to, to employ people to do that. Um, but they, they know how to get these things done, and so that's really useful. Uh, it's also really important, and something that I have really, I've, I have managed and supervised uh the ambassador program since its uh start in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, one thing that I have really drove, driven home with them is, and they very much appreciate, is they're not a security force. They're not out there to be law enforcement. They're not there to do security. Uh, they are, uh, while they may be uh connected with the police department, uh, they do a different role. They have a different task. Uh, they're, they're very much not there to do security. Um, and uh, you know, just like any city employee, if they see some, something that's dangerous, they'll call that in. Uh, but they're not there to toll on people. Uh, they're tho- there to build relationships and be that bridge. So, a typical day uh for uh community ambassadors, they respond to calls. Um, they, they have uh cell phones, and they get calls directly from businesses and people in the community. And they, they will go and they deal with things that are not emergencies, that are, that are not um, that the police don't need to go to, um, but that it's convenient to have somebody to go take care of it. Uh, and so they go, they handle those calls. They go deal with, uh, you know, if there's somebody who might be sitting on the sidewalk in front of a business, and who's not causing a problem, but is just kind of obstructing the access to the business. They might get a call about that, and they can go and look and see if they know that person, and they might be able to have a conversation with that person and easily get them to move along and have it not be an on-issue. Uh, at the same time, if they get a call that is beyond their capacity, they absolutely um are able to recognize that and are trained to recognize that and can call for assistance, can call the police if necessary, or in many cases, just walk away. Um, if they don't need to do anything, um, they have the authority to, to make that decision. Uh, they're out there and they listen. Uh, they listen to people, a lot of people out on the streets just want, want someone to talk to. Just want somebody to care. Uh, and they do that. They're out there and they listen, and they're engaged. Uh, and they, they're helping our general public. Uh, they also provide beautification assistance. They are, they're out there cleaning up. They, you'll see them out there with their, their green buckets and their trash pick wrappers, and they're picking up litter. They are picking up an unbelievable amount of trash. Uh, they also help uh support the city in those efforts. They call in a lot of things to Public Works. They call, they send emails on a regular basis, basis to different city staff um, to address problems that they've noticed out in the areas that they work. Uh, the areas that they're currently in go from uh Seventh Street uh up to Eighteenth and from highway, the highway essentially to J Street. Uh, as a general rule, if the, if they see stuff that's a little bit outside of that, they have the authority to go out there and, and take care of that, but that's their general area. Uh, some statistics, uh, they've got a lot of them. So we've been collecting stats, uh, or they've been collecting stats, and I've been looking at them for the past uh three years. This is just a sample of the things that they kind of do, and the, these stats, these are um, you know, they're, they're somewhat rough. Uh, they log these um throughout their shift and at the end of their shift. Um, and uh, you know, kind of keep a running tally in their head as they go throughout the day. But they uh, uh, this, this is just this year's stats, and this year they have uh called into police dispatch a total of twenty-one times. They've reached out to Public Works almost a hundred times. Uh, they've checked in with well over a thousand businesses. They have checked in with over four thousand unhoused people um that they've had interactions with, uh, and most of the, by far, most of these interactions are positive. Uh, they check in with tourists. They're checking in with almost three, almost four thousand tourists as well. People, uh, and people that they perceive to be, you know, living in houses in this community. Um, they have picked up uh almost three thousand five-gallon buckets of trash this year alone. Uh, that's huge. In that little area, um, they have done that. Uh, they also, they're on the lookout for things that might be weapons. They find pipes and knives and stuff stashed in weird places throughout the city, and they collect those. Um, if the trash, we get rid of them. If not, they go into found property. Uh, this, the total stats for the last three years are, are even more impressive. Uh, the one that really stands out to me is, is the buckets of trash. Uh, and I did some math on that. If you figure an average buckets, bucket of trash weighs five pounds, which is being, I think, light. It's almost thirty tons of trash that has been removed um and cleaned up uh by the community ambassadors in the last three years. That's pretty darn impressive, I think. They have an impact out there. The things they do matter. I genuinely believe that. Uh, I've seen it. Uh, they uh have a connection with the community. They know the people out there, the people out there by and large, uh, city, um, businesses, uh, people, other people, other employees for the city, uh, unhoused community members. They trust them. They'll talk with them. They're engaged with them. Uh, we have a cleaner city because of them. We have uh, you know, almost thirty-ten cleaner city. Um, we have a reduced need for pub- uh, police services in those areas, like genuinely. Uh, the first two years of this, I compared the uh police response in that area um before and after they were implemented. Um, and there was a significant reduction in calls for police service, uh, in, in many cases, up to a third, um, for certain types of calls. Uh, they have an impact. They, they reduce our workload as police officers. They make for a better community. Uh, they're doing that, and so um I, I very much uh appreciate this, the community masters. Um, going forward here, uh, I am currently in the process of hiring three additional uh, uh, community masters. I have, currently have, I think, sixteen applications sitting on my desk. That we are going to be, I'll be doing interviews in the next week or so. I just need to reach out and call people. We are cleared and expected to be expanding into the Valley West area. Um, exactly what that looks like will be yet to be determined, but we are, we are in the process of doing that. Uh, and we plan to continue to support this community for a long time to come. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
So, you're completed your presentation. So what I'm going to do is turn it over to our council member Stacy Atkinson Salazar, because she's the one that was able to pull this program together and came up with it, and I really thank you for it, and I'm sure the citizens of Arcata do too. So I thought you would like to make some comments?
Thank you. I mean, let's be clear, staff pulled it together, but um, but yes, and we all supported it, but thank you. Um, I don't have questions. I'm just happy that it's going strong. I know, you know, there's been some uh changes and adjusting as we've tried to figure out. You know, we started with a pilot program to keep it small, and that was one thing I learned from staff because my idea was just this big program, and I was coached to keep it small. And we did, and that's given us an opportunity to work out some of those bugs, and I'm, I'm grateful for that and really excited that we are expanding it into Valley West. So, thank you.
Well, since we're on this side, would you like, is anyone else like to speak on this?
I was gonna call out Stacy too, but you already did it, so. But yeah, thank you, and this was, you know, something so great that came kind of from our, our COVID era. I'm glad that, you know, we could implement it small and, and keep it going, and it really does show, you know, these alternative methods of policing work. And it, it's not policing. It's connecting with people. It's getting involved in the community, and that's really, you know, what can support people and um, you know, make for the best outcome. And so it's been really great to see how this program's developed, how you've managed them, um, and it's been great. them, and it's been great. So just thank you and excited to see what it holds in Valley West.
Thank you. We'll go to Meredith and Hugh Kimberly.
Thank you so much. You know, full disclosure, one of my dearest friends is a community ambassador, so I can, you know, speak from the things that he tells me about the work he does, how engaged all of the community ambassadors are with the community, about sometimes the emotional toll that it takes on them. So I just really appreciate the amount of love and commitment that they put into this. And again, I'm thankful for the program, and I'm really excited to see it expand, so thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly?
Thank you for that wonderful presentation, and thank you, Stacy, for bringing this to our wonderful city, and I am excited to have them out in Valley West. And you said it's in the process. Do we have a tentative date, what that might look like? And then my other question is, do we know, like, a tentative number? Would it be part-time, full-time, one person, two?
So all of the ambassadors are part-time positions, and so the, it will be really rotational. Part of the concern and the thing that I really want to make sure that we don't do is that we don't lose capacity in the area where we have gained so much ground. So I will be working to make sure that we are maintaining a presence downtown and then in this area, but also I very much want to see it succeed and be successful up there. So my goal will be these three new hires that we focus three people up there and see if we can rotate some additional in. But really, these three that were new hires will be primarily focusing up there is my current plan.
And so the total number will be about nine? You said there were six, you'll have three now? And speaking of capacity, you mentioned that this particular service reduces the need for police services, which increases your capacity, of course. I am wondering, while they're not security or law enforcement, are they trained in de-escalation techniques at all? And then that kind of leads to welfare checks. What kind of training do they get to know, you know, what the appropriate response would be and whether it is indicative of, do they need a welfare check or, does that make?
You're asking if the ambassadors are trained in that?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we do a kind of a field training program with them. There's about a week of in-classroom training that's pretty extensive, and then there's an additional, usually about two weeks, where they are directly shadowing with another ambassador and learning from them. And yes, we do talk about, there's a whole section on de-escalation that I teach, and there's also, we talk about welfare checks. We talk about, you know, when to call in, when someone might be having a medical emergency. It's also a fine line, because we want to make sure we're not intruding too much into somebody's life. So if somebody appears to be sleeping on the plaza and by all outward signs appears to be okay, then we should probably leave them alone. And so we're looking, you know, they are trained to look for things that seem unusual.
I had another question, just, I noticed, how many years has it been operating total?
About three.
So the number of welfare checks seems to have decreased this year. Of course, we're only halfway through, so maybe that's indicative of that.
Yes.
But it was like well over from 22, I believe. There were, I think it was like, I don't remember the number, it was like 1,300, 1,500?
And year to year, we're gonna have fluctuation. We're gonna have change. We're also, there are times where we've had fluctuation in staff and overall numbers of ambassadors who are available. Another thing that really, in my opinion, has made this effective is that I don't try to shove them into a mold. I'm hiring good people who want to do good things, and so I'm looking for people to focus on the things that they're passionate about and that they care, that they want to look into. And so there are times when we might have people that are going to do less welfare checks, that are going to do those things, but by and large, we're still out there doing those things, and we're still having an impact.
No, that makes sense. You may have an ambassador who is very compassionate and has a heart for the unhoused, and they might be better suited in a particular area, neighborhood versus somebody who maybe is more into tourism or, you know, face-to-face business opportunities or that kind of thing.
And I try to hire for some diversity in that. Yeah.
Great job. Thank you.
So I was gonna follow up on that, because I noticed that different ambassadors have a different interest in what they do and how they clean and what they take care of in our city, and it's been very much appreciated. And Stacy?
Yeah, I had one more thing that's not exactly related to this, but it just to, I think the public would be interested, it ties into this, is one of our council goals is to have embedded clinicians within our police department. That would really make a difference, because I think we all know a lot of calls are mental health-related, and so this is a priority and love to see that. I'm sure all my council members would love to see how we can get that funded and moving forward, because that will also make a huge difference in our community.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. It's very informative. Appreciate knowing what's going on.
Thanks for your time.
So thank you. So with that, we're gonna move right into written or oral communications. You know, we really just have oral communications. We don't really have written anymore. It's almost like we could scratch that. The City Council values your comments, and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters, not on the agenda. The early section of the public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and the speakers are limited to two minutes each. We also have an additional item on our agenda under 12, where you can come and speak again, and at that time, you'll have additional two minutes, but it will not be the same person speaking twice to get four minutes. So the total is two. And pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda, and the council may report, respond to statements. There will also be time for public comment specific to each item that's going to be on the consent calendar. So our first people will have, your speakers, why don't you please come forward?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name's Dan Hauser. I am a resident of Arcata, but for the last almost 20 years, I've also been a board member of an organization, nonprofit organization called Affordable Communities, Inc. We own mobile home parks throughout California, Oregon, and Washington with the objective of helping the residents of those mobile home parks purchase their parks over time. We own two parks in Arcata, the Sandpiper and Arcata Mobile Home Park. I'm pleased to report to the council that with the help of the City of Arcata, we have placed four units at Arcata Mobile Home Park that are identical to the ones at the Sandpiper that are administered by Arcata House and are used to house formerly homeless people. We finally got them delivered, installed, and they're now occupied, as I said, with the assistance of Arcata House managing them. It's a start. We hope to place more units there in the future, but it's done a good job of helping provide housing for formerly homeless people. Thank you.
And thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, council. We're the Bettis's, and we're just here to support the Gaza Sister City Initiative and also writing a letter to divest from CalPERS. You may have heard that Eureka did that last year. It's very easy. It's just a letter. It's not gonna bankrupt the city. I'm a CalPERS member. I support it. So does my husband. You just sign the letter, and you just say, hey, we don't agree with this. It's very powerful. We strongly support that. I also wanted to donate to the city's library. Hopefully, you all take this into account. The Hundred Year War, I have five copies. I'd like to work with Ria to give them to the city. I think there is some anti-Palestinian racism occurring within the City of Arcata, and I encourage you to educate yourselves and read about the history of Israel-Palestine. This is an award-winning book. It's written by a very well-respected historian, Columbia professor, history professor. Sometimes it makes people mad, and they go to the co-op, and they actually throw this book all over the place, because it was up. That's how mad they makes people. But it's very true, and truth is powerful. I also brought this soap. I'm gonna donate some to the city. It's a fundraiser for a family in Gaza that is starving, and they have a newborn baby that is under siege and has diarrhea and malnutrition. This soap is a 4,500-year-old recipe from Iraq and Syria before there were any borders in the region. This comes from a 15-year-old soap factory in Nablus. It's the last of its kind. It is an amazing thing, and it should remain. Do you want to say anything, Ben?
Yeah, just like in the beginning, I mean, the proclamations were all about peace, and it just seems like the sister city is about building bridges of peace to another communities, such as the sister city in Nicaragua. And the land acknowledgement makes it seem like this city is against colonization, and you have the world flag right there, which is like every people's, you know, that we care about all people. And so it just seems like it's a nothing.
Thank you both very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Tricia Murphy, and I'm here to support the sister city, and I'm here to support signing the CalPERS letter, which is just a letter that says, we would like for you, the powers that be at CalPERS that make the decisions on who to invest in. It's a letter that says, we would like you to not invest in companies that are helping with this genocide. I was out of town at the last meeting when the proposed resolution was put forth. I, I thought we had already, in our first resolution, said that we'd like to continue bringing aid in, so I don't really see the point of, you know, when it was, when it was expressed by you, Stacy, it sounded as if you were making a big compromise, and we've actually already asked for that in our first resolution. What we need to stop Israel is something with teeth. CalPERS barely has that, to sign that letter. I just am so disappointed, and I heard you, Meredith, talk about how.
You need to address the entire council and not point out anyone in particular.
I heard someone on the council say that Gaza is, that Hamas is a designated terrorist group. I think that's rich, when you consider what Israel has been doing there the past almost two years and the past 78 years. It's been a total slaughter, and the world knows it. 67% of Democrats know it's a genocide. I'm out of time.
Thank you very much for your speak. Thank you. Your next speaker?
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Doug Jackson. Seven and a half years, my professional civil engineering career. I was a structures rep at Caltrans, Structures Construction. My father was a resident engineer of the 255-101 separation and the Seventh Street Bridge in 64-65. I don't know if this is appropriate now in the public comment period, but there was no public comment allowed for a staff report on the agenda item. I worked at Caltrans on value analysis programs, where Caltrans took the lead. They did not disshelf the responsibilities of coming up with alternatives to an improvement project to a local agency. At those value analysis programs, we have the stakeholders, City of Arcata, bicycle, pedestrian organizations. We have representatives from Structures Construction and Structures Design. And I'm just trying to be a siren to tell you that what was in the staff report tonight is not a very good idea, okay? I'll just be in simple layman's terms. The design of that interchange was based on a 100-year lifespan. I would like to participate in it. I just only found out about this staff report in the last week. I had no idea. I'm recovering from stomach cancer. I had my stomach removed last October, so anyway, I'm running out of time, and I can't talk at the three-minute, but I would like to be involved as possibly technical assistance, technical involvement, because it's been stated that a horse designed by committee is a camel, and you have a camel out there of alternatives in the Samoa Boulevard corridor and the Caltrans right-ofways. So I'm not a very good public speaker, I'm just a civil engineer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Historical figures, C.C. Richards, Thomas Devlin, Celester Myers, R.M. Fernal, J.E. Crawford, James F. Denny, and John C. Bull, Jr. These are the names of the Arcata City Council members who adopted the Eureka Method, a resolution for the ethnic cleansing of all Chinese immigrants from our city in 1886. They thought they were doing the right thing by giving the mob what it wanted. My name is Abraham. I'm from Arcata, and in 100 years, no one will remember me, but the official actions that you take on behalf of my city will become the legacy that you and I leave to our grandchildren. There is no middle road on the subject of Israel and no division in this community. You have American citizens, Arcatans, living in this community who are Israeli. You've been hearing the number 1,500, and it's been months since the Jew haters have been able to collect a single signature beyond that, leaving the 99% of us who stand with Israel in its just war of self-defense. And when I see the way you've been treated by today's Nazi party, my first instinct is sympathy, until I remember that you chose to represent me. You volunteered to stand between me and this brief but disturbing resurgence of violent, anti-government hate. I want my children to read about Alex Stillman, Kim White, Stacy Atkins, and Sarah Schaefer, and Meredith Matthews, who stood with the Jewish community when they became a target for hate. I want you to be the heroes who passed a resolution condemning hate speech against Jews, not falsely accusing Israel of starving its enemies. I want you to see, or I want to see you on the right side of history, the Jewish side, standing in support of the Jewish nation. I won't be remembered, but you will. What do you want it to be for?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Joanne McGary. I want to talk about three things in two minutes. I'll start with Bright and Green. The Friday Night Market is going to have Bright and Green reusable dishes and all available for people attending the event, our first event here on Friday. And I think it's wonderful, because the Cal Poly campus is sponsoring it, because they're dedicated to sustainability, and it's a message that we can send out to all the newcomers to our community who attend this event, that we here in Arcata care about reusables and zero waste and the environment and doing the better thing. So that's wonderful for Bright and Green. Secondly, I want to talk about the Nicaraguan sister city and the I Block Party, which I volunteered for and participated throughout the year at meetings as it was being planned. And my job at the I Block Party was to greet people and keep dogs out, but also to inform them what this event was all about, because I think when we have events in our community, it's fun, it's enjoyable, but I think it's really important for people to know why we're having these events. And the sister city in Nicaragua is a really important historical union between two cities in different countries. So that's something that's really important to me, that we recognize that we do good for people elsewhere, which brings me to Palestine, peace and justice in Palestine. I know that a discussion was made about humanitarian aid resolution. There is a global Samudh flotilla with 44 nations participating sailing in the Mediterranean Sea legally in international waters to bring humanitarian aid. The City of Arcata can support that, the global Samudh flotilla with Greta Thunberg and many, many other prominent people there. And so I think you should do that.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Thank you for allowing me to address you guys. I'm very happy to see you, and I am here to make a comment in favor of a sister city with Gaza City. Just like the Nicaraguan sister city has offered a lot of benefit to our local community, so too can a sister city in Gaza City. These pictures are from children in Gaza City that during an event that we funded, Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition funded, in an attempt to build the sister city relationship. We were working with the Gaza City Municipality. They want to be a sister city with us. But these pictures are so important, because so many of us have already seen children much like these, only... much like these, only massacred, pulled from rubble, dead, or in a bad state. But these are living children, and it's so important to remember that there are almost a million people in Gaza City right now that are alive, and that we can actually do things now to support them and to be part of the solution. It's not too late. And, you know, our contacts in Gaza City are saying it's a very dire situation right now. Many of you may have noticed the extreme escalations even just last night. The occupation forces are trying to close in on Gaza City, and it's really making it a focal point. We've been advocating for months for Gaza City Sister City. And, you know, they've said that they're targeting any ray of hope in Gaza, right? They want us to feel disappointed. They want us to feel disillusioned and that we can't do anything, right? And this is all the more reason why we need to actually show that we can do something. We can make a difference. So please, pass the resolution for Sister City.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor Stillman.
Are we fifteen minutes?
We're just at fifteen minutes now. I just wanted to give a quick time check.
To the city council? The city council. And I'd like to also address this to the anti-Israel people in Humboldt County. Children are hungry because of Hamas. If you are advocating for Hamas, for the destruction of the sovereign state of Israel, I'd like to tell you what many people in the international community already know. Hamas is a death cult. Hamas gleefully and certainly classifies women and children as pawns, as killable pawns in their quest to demonize Israel. And it's working. If you care more about women and children in Gaza than demonizing Israel and considering a resolution of a conflict that's halfway around the world, you will please work for a free Gaza devoid of Hamas and safe for women and children. They are not safe with Hamas in power. That means you must stop using every libel and lie in the book against Jews and Israel and work to free Gaza from Hamas, because only then can both people live in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that'll be the end of public comment at this time, and we'll have public comment later. I would like to take a five-minute break, please. Oh, well, fifteen minutes is over. For, um, thank you for letting us call the meeting back to order. Under the consent calendar tonight, we have the approval to waive reading of the texts and consent to read by title only of any ordinance on this agenda. So then we go on. Just a moment, change the page. B, approve the minutes of August twentieth, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five special city council meeting. C, approve the minutes of the August twenty-two, twenty-five city council meeting. D, bi-weekly report on dispersments. E, adopt ordinance number fifteen eighty-two and ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to dogs at large, service animals, dog licenses, dog empowerment. Title V, section, or sanitation and health, entitled M-ten of Public Property. F, let me see if I can get the microphone so I can see. So the next one would be F, approve the project plans and award a construction control for Arcata Annie and Mary Trail Connectivity Project to Granite Construction Company in the amount of seven, hmm, seven million. Is it seven million? Okay, seven million, one, eleven hundred and, wow, it's a big number. Seven hu- million, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars and five hundred and- I, you know, I'm really bad at numbers. But anyways, a lot of money, but it's going to be really important and approve the necessary associated related actions. G, approve the grant application to Ocean Protection Council Senate Bill One, Sea Level Rise Adaptation Planning Grant Program to develop an adoption pathways approach focused on Arcata's local coastal element zone one. H, approve a purchase contract with municipal maintenance equipment for one Rapid View lateral launch system in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand approximately dollars, including tax and delivery on-site training, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. I, adopt resolution number two-five-six dash oh-eight, amending resolution number one-seven-eight dash thirty-three, designating street subjects to stop signs. And J, adopt resolution number two-five-six oh-nine, amending resolution number two-three-four dash three-three, designating one-way streets and alleys. Is there anything on the agenda that a council member would like to pull?
Yes, please. Oop, that's bad. I'd like to pull F, and I'd also like to pull J, please. Same.
Okay, anyone else, or anything else other than F and J?
And the same, and also G.
And G. Okay. And, um-
Okay. Oh, wait, no, we're going to take public comment on the consent calendar.
And I have to pull D. So besides that, is there any, well, we- So our public comment would be on A, B, C, E, H, and I. We could have adoption of those. Any public comment on those? May we have a motion for B, C, E, H, and I? Please?
Yeah, I will move to approve items A, B, C, E-
E, H, and I.
H, and I. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So we'll go to D.
May I interrupt? I just didn't hear council member, Vice Mayor White's vote.
Did you vote yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So item B, D, I'm sorry, bi-weekly reports. I have to abstain from that one. And, uh-
All right, should I just make that motion to approve D then? All right, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second, and then we'll take comment on it.
All those in favor, sig-
Then we'll take, does anybody want to comment on D? No?
Probably not. Not on that one, anyway. I think there's other things that we're interested in. D, maybe we have a vote. Yes, all those in favor, and D?
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. So we'll go to F. Approve the project plan and award of the construction contract for the Annie and Mary.
Yeah, it just seemed like an awful lot of money to not have a staff report, and, because it's also a cool thing, so. And it looks like you're ready for it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Council, for your interest in this project. I'm Emily Sinkorn, Environmental Services Director. And this is a really exciting time for a longtime capital improvement project and council priority project to really connect North Arcata with a walking biking route separated from roadways to really expand the Bay Trail and continue on towards eventually Blue Lake. So I was last in front of your council in April with a very similar presentation, but just for others who weren't able to be here, have a quick overview. So the Annie and Mary Trail has been envisioned along the rail corridor for over twenty-five, thirty years. It's been a priority project of your council for many fiscal years. It really would be about three and a half miles of a Class One separated trail and provide access to the Mad River. The dashed line is the project area stretching from Sunset Avenue and the skate park in the south through North Arcata, connecting to Valley West via improvements on the G and Tully Lane over 299 and all the way out to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District's Park One. Just some photos of the areas that the trail will connect to. It will really connect into the Foster Avenue Trail in the north end of the Bay Trail at Sunset. A key component that we are hoping to commence construction on and hopefully advance quickly this fall is the connection to Cal Poly's new student housing. Then going up north through there, it traverses through the Alder Grove West End Road area. The landscape changes. This is a really key businesses, employment centers. The trail will provide that commuting route. And then we get to a really lovely north of West End Road along the Mad River in the Riparian Corridor. So the look and feel of the trail will change throughout the project area. A key component of this project and what has really, we've really been engaging with Caltrans District One on designing pedestrian and bicycle improvements to this much-frequented overpass over 299 that currently has no facilities. So that's a key component of the project as well. So just for a timeline, the city began this work in earnest in 2018. Your council has had many touchpoints, and we are now heading into construction. So that, this is a really exciting milestone. So the council has taken many previous actions for contracts for support for the city to get to here. You adopted SEQA. We approved our right-of-way agreements and accepted an easement with the water district. So just for the latest, we released construction bids at the end of July. We received four competitive bids. As the staff report notes, Granite Construction Company was the lowest responsible bidder, and that is the staff's recommendation for award tonight. We also included two additive alternatives to the bid, and one is to replace a failed culvert in the Erickson area off of Frank Martin Court. That's what this graphic is here. That has separate funding through the city's Stormwater Fund. It's also a priority capital improvement project. As well as, we're really hoping for early completion of the southernmost trail section so students in the new dorms can use the trail to walk or bike to Cal Poly. And just an outline of the funding that is really leading to this, you know, it's a significant investment, and we have significant grants through the state and through a partnership with the Urocan Indian Housing Authority. Cal Poly Humboldt is also contributing. And just for construction timeline, again, we're hoping to start work this month in September, and it will be at least two construction seasons. So we're really aiming towards completion at the 2026. And so that is just a brief overview. And happy to answer any questions. And our city's engineering department has led the design, and it's been a lot of work. And it's really exciting to be here with such a big project. Our numbers on the trail counters from the Bay Trail have been just elevating with the connection to Eureka, and it'll be really beneficial to the city to extend that type of facility northward through the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Yes, Sarah?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I mean, I understand why it might have been put on consent. It's a popular program. I don't, I don't remember the last time we had any pushback on it. So I get that. And we did talk about it at length in April. But what I think it's a number, you know, seven million on the consent, it's just great to have this kind of a brief overview, especially to see where all the funding's coming from, because folks might look and think it's coming, you know, out of our general fund when really it's grant-driven. So thank you for doing that.
And I think it's great to also just be able to celebrate, like, how far we've come and how close we are for something that we've been getting updates on for a long time. So thank you. I know that was a lot of hard work, and I'm really looking forward to it.
Anything, Kimberly?
Can I, yeah, can I just, can I say my thing?
I was going to let you wrap it up.
Ooh, wrap it up. Nope, Kimberly's going to wrap it up. This is just a point of, I'm going to say it out loud so you guys remember to talk to me about it, and we remember it. Because a couple of years ago when I was mayor, Emily and I met with some folks from Timber Heritage out at a site off by Alder Grove. And there is some really interesting, cool rail equipment that is out there that they wanted our help of just kind of supporting and helping them advocate to be able to get that rail equipment when it is removed. And so their president reached out to me, and they've been working with GRTA, hopefully, in some other areas of the trail and are already getting access to some of that equipment. And so they're, you know, positive and hoping that they will be able to use some of this equipment at their site out in Samoa. And so just, I have a request by them, and I kind of update that they wanted to that letter that I originally signed as mayor. And so maybe we can rope Alex into it and update that and talk to them a little bit more about what they're looking for. But they are, again, still hoping that we support them in being able to get some of that really cool, it's an old railroad switch and some really interesting equipment.
To do that?
And just to respond to that, we've been working-
And, um, I just, just to respond to that, um, we've been working with, um, GR TA, Grat Redwood Trail Agency owns the infrastructure, so it, you know, it is up to them. And we, um, worked with them to get just the language for salvaging of the materials and just of understanding their interest of then working with Timber Heritage Association. So that language has been wrapped into... What the city can do so far has been wrapped into the, um, bid documents.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you for that, Sarah. I was not aware of that, and that's super exciting. Um, the Timber Heritage also has some really cool, uh, rail car rides if you haven't had an opportunity to check that out. It's very interesting. Yeah, I'm super excited about this, uh, these trails, of course, because it's gonna help out Valley West, and it's gonna be, um... I lost my notes what I was gonna say, but I think everybody pretty much covered everything. So, yeah, I'm excited. I'm glad that we had an opportunity to, um, go over it. And I'm sure the public, you know, although it's been happening for a while, it's always good to get refreshed and see where we're at with that. Oh, I did, I do know the question. Twenty twenty-six is the estimate. Is that for the road that's gonna connect to the new dorms, Cal Poly Humboldt, to...
To the, uh, down, down to, uh, Sunset.
Yeah, so, um, the goal is to complete by the end of 2025. The goal would be to complete the trail to the Hinadha Mulik Dorms.
Okay.
Um, and, but also if things may come up, and it may be a winter season. So we're really aiming for that, and that's how we structured the, the bid, and that's known by the contractor. But for the whole trail completion, we're aiming at the end of 2026.
Thank you for that clarification.
So thank you. It's always great to be able to, uh, plug this because it's so important, and it's a great Redwood Trail system, and it's going to be really a wonderful thing for us to have. And many people out in Alder Grove are very excited about having the trail go by their buildings, and they're thinking about what entrepreneurial things they can possibly do out there. So I'm sure we'll have a new coffee shop. So could we have a motion to approve?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve item F on the consent calendar.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Excuse me?
Public comment? No one?
I do have one hand raised on Zoom.
Oh, in Zoom, okay. We can never see hands in Zoom.
Username H, please go ahead.
Thank you. These trails sound awesome, uh, but what happens to unhoused people who are currently trying to eke out their survival along the proposed routes of all these trails? Where are they to go? Are they being included in the planning? Are they at least informed of the plan? I love trails, but don't throw our most vulnerable residents under the bus for trails. Housing first before new coffee shops, please.
Thank you. Are there... Is there anyone else?
No, that was the only hand.
All right, so we had, um, I believe we have a motion. And all the, all those in favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
Ooh, there's something weird. Those opposed? Motion carries. So we'll go to G, which is approve a grant application to Ocean Protection Council, Senate Bill One, Sea Level Rise. And Kimberly, you asked about that?
Yeah, I just had a couple short questions. Um, I know we have some other outstanding grants for sea level rise, and I was just wondering how many and where are we at in the process?
Um, I'm just thinking of what outstanding gr... Um, could you clarify what you mean by outstanding? Sorry.
I thought that David had said we were applying for some other sea level grant. And so I just wondering, like, how many do we have and where we're at in that?
Yeah, well, I'll try, um, on that. So we have, um, two, um, California Coastal Commission rolling grants focused on local coastal planning. One is under community development, um, and, uh, community development could speak to that one more. Um, one, under environmental services, has supported the development of the updated Arcata Sea Level Rise Vulnerability and Risk Assessment, which also included a concept-level adaptation plan for this, um, Zone One that is really envisioned in the draft Local Coastal Program as the area that the city can work on for a measured retreat strategy to protect in place, um, for as long as that remains, um, feasible, um, while also then, um, planning for retreat as well. And so those are two, those are two grants. Um, we have had other, some other opportunities. This, um, Ocean Protection Council grant is one that is, um, I think it's due next week. Um, the, the work could start in December or January, and it would be really focused on fleshing out more detail of a pathways approach for an adaptation plan, again, focused on that Zone One in line with the draft, um, LCP. And I think we'll, we'll see some other options, um, come up. Um, one, um, you know, maybe with, uh, State Coastal Conservancy. There's other funding sources out there. Um, but I'm just speaking to the kind of key active grants and this, you know, what we see as a real opportunity to, for the city.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm happy that we're taking advantage of all the opportunities out there.
So are there other comments on this? Is there any public comment on this item? All right, maybe we have a motion?
I do have one hand raised on Zoom.
Zoom, thank you.
Uh, username H, please go ahead. Username H, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. We have a large number of unhoused residents living there in that coastal zone, as shown on the map. It's all around them, and, um, I just encourage you to keep their needs in mind and keep them included, uh, and to make sure that they have a place to go. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, uh, maybe we have a motion to approve measure, uh, item G, which is the approval of the grant application? Somebody?
I move for approval of the grant application.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. All those in favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. So item J, um, several people wanted to pull that, so, um, which is the adopt resolution number two five six oh nine, amending resolution two three four dash thirty-three, designating one-way streets and alleys. Would you prefer a staff report? Let's have a staff report on that, and then we'll move forward. Thank you.
If a question, there's a staff report.
Well, I think, um, I know where it is.
Okay. Oh, I will maybe give you just a quick overview here. So, uh, last year we completed our Carlson Park, and that was one of the most exciting projects, and we got a lot of, lot of users. And the park includes, uh, parks for kids to play, includes pickleball court, and also have river access. And because of that, uh, there's a lot of parking needs in that. So right after the construction, we got a lot of complete, a lot of emails from people who've been using the pickleball and the park and the river access that there's not a lot of parking, and we need to provide some parking. And some people were parking, um, not in a safe condition, so we wanted to make sure when people are parking, they do it in safe manners. So we wanted to come up with a some solution, and in front of the screen, you can see, this is one of the option to solve the parking issue. It does not add a lot of parking, but definitely adds four parking spots. That's more than what we have right now. Currently, Carlson Park driveway is a deadened street, so converting the end portion of that to a one-way, it's not, it's feasible to do that safely. And also, that will, um, not, um, hinder our access to the river, and our staff and people will be able to use the river access. So this is one of the many options we wanted to present. And then the only way we can convert our two-way street to a one-way street is by resolution, so hence the resolution in front of you. So we wanted to see now if you want to approve this or not. Um, we did get a lot of requests from people, so that's why we proposed this as, uh, under the consent item.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Would you please come forward? Please, you can step right up to the mic. Thank you.
I am a great lover of pickleball and would greatly appreciate, uh, more parking spaces. People are, are... It's not easily understood, the signage down there is a little confusing. One street isn't signed, no parking. One street is signed, no parking, and people are getting tickets down there. And, uh, you know, I heard an objection saying, "We want more people to bike, so we don't want to put parking in there." But people go off to work after that, they have, they have other obligations, they can't devote their lives to biking over there. So parking is a reality, and there's a lot of people who walk their dogs there. There's a lot of people who just take a walk there, a lot of people with kids, and they don't... It's just not feasible to ride a bike sometimes, you know? And so everybody down there loves Carlson. It's the best pickleball court in Humboldt County, and it gets a tremendous amount of use. You would not believe it. Really a lot of use. So this would be great. Any help would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Scott Hagerty. I'm the second-year president of the Humboldt Bay Pickleball Club. Uh, our club has grown in the last few years from about eighty-five to over two hundred now, and those are just the members. We have many others that play on a regular basis, uh, that are not members. Carlson is one of the primary places that people play now. We really appreciate those courts going in here about a year ago, and gets a lot of use because they're permanent pickleball courts. On any given day, there's probably twenty to thirty people that are playing there, mostly between nine and noon and one o'clock, but others throughout the day in the afternoon and evenings. So, um, because of that, uh, we do have that need for additional parking. I've heard from, uh, much of the agenda topics earlier tonight, uh, having to do with safe walkways, safe streets, um, and making communities safe. I feel that since we have, uh, started playing there, it's safer in that neighborhood just with our presence. And as Laura had mentioned, we do have issues as far as currently being able to get to and from there, especially in the morning and rush hour traffic with, uh, a number of people that are playing. And right now, the streets aren't that safe, but maybe the Annie and Mary, when so that gets in, would be an improvement. But, um, really appreciate it, appreciate everything that has been done to date there with Carlson, and, uh, we plan on offering some, uh, some tournaments there and clinics and helping other people, uh, get into the sport in the future, and that will require additional parking. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Well, I had intended to ask if the engineering department had looked at encouraging other... Making it easier for other methods of transportation to get there. But, um, it sounds like the parking is needed, so never mind.
Oh, thank you very much. Do we have someone on Zoom?
Yes, we have two hands on Zoom. H, please go ahead.
Parking is an ADA and accessibility issue. Not everyone can ride a bike. Parking is also a huge safety issue for unhoused Arcadians who are hard-pressed to find a safe place to sleep without being harassed by the cops as we crack down on parking restrictions all around the city and this county. We have a lot of residents and Cal Poly Humboldt students who live in their cars and need a safe place to park for the night so that they can sleep. That needs to be a priority. No shade to pickleball.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, Colin, please go ahead.
Good evening, council. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. We're obviously very pleased with the success of Carlson Park, and, um, we just want to encourage the city to prioritize, uh, providing safe access to the park by means other than driving. And so I think, um, additional, uh, safe and secure bike parking would be great. Also, um, upgrades to the bike infrastructure on Gentoli Lane, uh, to meet up with, uh, the overpass improvements and the Annie and Mary Trail that you just heard about would be really wonderful. I think, uh, you've heard some comments, not everyone can bike. That's true, but a lot of people can. The vast majority of people can bike. And I think if we provide safe and, uh, convenient and comfortable infrastructure, uh, more people will do that. And I think, um, you know, you, you, you've seen over and over again in project after project that, um, you can't provide enough parking, uh, when there's, when there's a... When there's a perceived need for parking, it's very difficult to meet that need, uh, by providing more. It's sort of a conveyor belt. And so I think we should really try to look at other modes of transportation, providing that safe access and prioritizing, uh, that when possible. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
No, there's nobody else on Zoom.
Can we bring it back to the council then? Are there any comments from the council? Yes? I'm gonna start with Sarah.
Just like really, this is like so quick, because now I'm bridging two things together. But, um, hopefully, in the design for Annie and Mary, when we're going through that area, there will be a, a nice, safe connection to Carlson Park for those, that bike infrastructure and for folks. I see that you're nodding. Okay, beautiful.
And I know, I mean, we, we are working on, we do have good bus service. Um, it, obviously, it could be better, and we're working to improve that, which will help. And we did talk about the connectivity with the trail. And so maybe as that connectivity with the trail, um, moves forward, we could also make sure that we have adequate spaces at Carlson Park, you know, for people, because parking is an issue for bikes as well. Um, I think maybe just hearing folks being a little bit confused about where to park and getting tickets, maybe we work on signage of where we, where you can't park so that, um, people aren't accidentally getting tickets. And I think if we were, I, I don't see a problem with adding four parking spots. If we were compromising the park, if we were taking up green space, not putting in a pickleball court, um, but we're just using road space that's already there to park cars on. So I, I don't see a harm in, um, providing for more spots for a popular park.
Thank you. We'll go to Kimberly.
Yeah, I'm for anything that will improve North Arcata, and bringing the pickleball courts has certainly done that, bringing folks from outside of the area. And as pointed out by Scott, um, the neighborhood is safer in, with the presence. I just, um, I want to make sure that, you know, several months ago when we had a, uh, study session, I had brought up the fact that we need a flashing crosswalk. And I do understand all of those things cost money. It was the second year in a row that I had brought that up, and there just simply is no funding. And I do understand that adding four spots and turning it into a one-way is gonna be, not cost as much as some of these other things that we're asking for. So I guess I just want to make sure it doesn't fall between the cracks and that we do return and revisit to make it safer. Um, I, I live out there, and I see near, uh, pretty serious accidents with, you know, moms pushing their buggy, and there just is no safe walking path. The bicycle path is not safe. We do need more bicycle parking out there. The one that's out there is beautiful. It's, um, it's really cool with the redwoods and, but, but it's not simply enough. So anyway, that's what I have to say about that. Um, I love the pickleball courts, and, um, if you need to rent some rackets, actually, it's a free library at Kuna, so hit me up. We have five or six sats ready to go.
Thank you. Meredith?
Everybody said everything that I was gonna say, so thank you all. I'll make a motion, I guess, to approve item J. And, oh, Alex, I'm sorry, did you have something to say?
No, go, please make a motion.
I did.
I will second.
He's moved and seconded, and all those in favor signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries. So now we're going to go... It's only four, but it's going to work much better than what you had before. So thank you. So we don't have any old business, going to go on to new business, and that is, uh, A, is review and determine if approval will be granted for a special event permit application for Arcata Playhouse, or I should say Playhouse Arts for Sunnybury Porch Fest, is October fifth, 2025. And we have a staff report for that, please? Presentation, please.
Sure. Good evening, council and community members. Um, before getting into the specifics of the request before you tonight, I wanted to provide a little bit of background on the City of Arcata's special event consideration and the porch fest that happened last year that has brought staff to bring this before you for decision. Um, so for context, the City of Arcata provides an opportunity for community members and organizations to propose and obtain permits for special events on all types of city property and public right-of-way. And so in twenty twenty-four, Playhouse Arts held Porch Fest, their inaugural porch fest. And that was held throughout the Sunnybury neighborhood. It included a full day of music on porches, driveways and yards. Um, while the intent was that the entire event would be held on private property, the event was larger and some might say more successful than initially anticipated. Um, but unfortunately, that footprint did extend into the public right-of-way. And after the event, the city received a mix of both positive and negative feedback from neighborhood residents, um, which also led Playhouse Arts to hosting a listening session after the fact to hear some of the community concerns. Um, so that was twenty twenty-four's event. In twenty twenty-five, Playhouse Arts is hoping to host a second porch fest this year. Uh, that would be held on October fifth. And in anticipation of porch fest twenty twenty-five, Playhouse Arts met with city staff late spring of this year to start to plan for some of the, um, logistics and community engagement to help prepare for a smooth event this year. Recognizing the mixed feedback that Playhouse Arts received in twenty twenty-four, they completed extensive outreach in the neighborhood over the summer to help address potential resident concerns. To help minimize neighborhood impacts, porch fest will be held from twelve PM to six PM. And it will still be held primarily on private property. Um, however, while most of the event will be held on private property, there will be a partial closure of Beverly Drive between Chester Ave and Buttermilk Lane. Um, the intent is that that would still allow local resident traffics to come and go to their, to and from their homes as needed. Um, but it would also allow for sort of the logistical event space needed to run the successful event, porta potties, uh, information kiosks, that sort of thing. Um, a couple of other details are that no food or alcohol would be served. And there will be about twenty-five staffer volunteers who will work to support porch fest, um, helping to ensure that attendees don't, aren't blocking streets or sidewalks. They're enabling the flow of both pedestrian and vehicular traffic outside of that closure area. And then lastly, you know, I mentioned last year, the, the event being bigger, um, than anticipated. So staff wanted to bring it, bring it before council for that reason. Additionally, it is in a residential area, which is different than a lot of the, um, larger special events that we see. So we felt it appropriate to bring forth to council for both, uh, council consideration and allow for community input. Um, that all being said, staff does believe that Playhouse Arts has provided a good faith effort to minimize negative impacts in the neighborhood, to provide opportunities for community feedback and to host a vibrant community event. And as such, we recommend that council approve the special event permit for porch fest twenty twenty-five. With that, I will pause and first ask if city manager Perry wanted to add anything.
I'll just say, yeah, we've had, we've had a lot of, um, positive feedback and we've had good success working with Playhouse Arts on this. So thanks to Jackie and Neroli. I think we should turn it over for that, to them in a minute to say a few things. We have also had people express concerns about the number of porta potties, emergency access and other things. So I might look for one amendment that would be to approve, um, the porch fest major special event application and include any amendments recommended by staff in case there's anything else that comes up that, that is identified by the public that needs to be in there. So a small amendment to the motion would be appreciated. And I think it'd be great to hear from, um, Jackie and Neroli.
Thank you. Would you like to make a presentation? Okay.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Narrowly. Nice to, uh, thank you guys for having us and having Porch Fest on the agenda tonight. Um, I work for Playhouse Arts and I'm also the station manager for Humboldt Hot Air, which is Arcata's community radio station, just a few blocks that way in the Creamery District. And so I helped coordinate Porch Fest last year. Um, I live in Sunnybury. I've lived in Sunnybury pretty much my entire life. I left for four years and other than that, when I went to college, but I've always lived in Sunnybury. I also worked at Murphy's in Sunnybury for two years. So Sunnybury is like a very dear to my heart. And I feel like a pretty good advocate for the neighborhood. Um, and yeah, so we did Porch Fest last year. Emily, thank you, covered it pretty well, kind of how it went. It was wildly successful, which to me says that, um, it's something the community really, really wants. A lot of neighbors, like I said, I know a lot of the neighbors were so excited and happy about porch fest. Um, but it obviously was a lot larger than we expected. Um, and so coming to porch fest this year, we're revisiting some of the things that went really well and some of the things that we can work on a little bit better. Um, you mentioned, um, blocking off the street, um, which I think will be really great to kind of have an organizational hub that people can kind of understand like that it's a real thing. Because it was kind of just spread out all over the place. So having a central zone is gonna be really helpful. Um, something that Emily didn't mention, but that we're also doing is we have already about twenty folks interested in hosting this year. We have about sixty folks interested in performing this year already. Um, and so when we're looking at the neighborhood, there was definitely some zones that are higher traffic that were sort of problem areas last year where it was especially bad to have all the people in the street. Um, because there's a lot of cars going by on, for example, on Chester. And so some of our, um, spots that we decided, we want to allow hosts to be able to host wherever, if they live in Sunnybury. Um, but we're not going to allow folks to host in their front yard on certain streets. And that includes Chester all the way up to Virginia. It includes the entirety of Buttermilk. And it includes Beverly Drive, not counting where we are blocking off, but Beverly Drive, I guess, from Chester to Virginia. So those are areas in Sunnybury where there's higher traffic and where we had some problems. And so we're really looking forward to having front yard, I think is part of like, the energy of porch fest is to have performances in front yards. But they're only gonna be on cul-de-sacs and lower traffic zones. Also, um, yesterday, we walked around and got, um, official signatures from every, uh, tenant and homeowner, people who live in the blocked off zone. So a hundred percent of the houses that live in the zone we are asking to block off have given us written approval. And I can give that to you guys, um, now, it's right here. Um, but just the overall, uh, it was such a great day and I got so much positive feedback. There was hundreds and hundreds of people there who told me that they were just like having so much fun. I think earlier in this meeting, you guys spoke about, you know, the highway divide of Arcata. And so I think it's really important that we bring festivals off the plaza and off of downtown Arcata into different areas of Arcata and sort of bring, bring lively, joy, community-like art and music, um, all over Arcata. And living in Sunnybury, of course, I'm partial. I want to bring it to Sunnybury. And I'm excited to improve on what we did last year. So let Jackie add to that.
Great. I just wanted to say too that one of the objectives of the local arts agency is to decentralize, uh, what we do in Arcata. So that like Narrowly saying, to get away from the Creamery District, to get away from, uh, the plaza. That those are not the only places where events happen. So, you know, when we do things in Valley West, when we do things in Sunnybury. With that, I'd like to acknowledge that there was a lot of, um, stress last year from people who lived in the houses, uh, that were in the Sunnybury market. And I don't want to discount their, um, their anger and their, um, total, um, just, it, it caused some harm to people who couldn't get out of their driveway, who didn't like the music, who wouldn't let their grandchildren out. And I really want to acknowledge those people and say, we've heard that and we are making choices around those homes. Um, Narrowly and volunteers went around and put door knockers on, like five hundred door knockers in Sunnybury, saying, here's what's happening, here's our number, please call us. Um, so really to acknowledge that it, you know, while it was a great success for maybe, maybe eighty percent of the people, there were twenty percent of the people who said, what the heck is going on in Sunnybury? We didn't hear about it. So really trying to mitigate those things with, um, reacting early, with doing the door knockers, with being available for comments, both after the, the event last year and this year as well. To say, how can we, you know, be, how can we be a, a good local arts agency for you as well? What do you need? And at the same time, um, embracing the eighty percent of the people who are really excited about porch fest. Porch Fest is not new and only to Arcata. It's, you know, across the US. Uh, Philadelphia has one and it's bonkers. There's nothing, no, they have not, no streets blocked off. Everyone's just walking in the streets, stopping in porches. And it's, uh, a bit crazy. We are not Philadelphia. I acknowledge that. And we would like to, you know, mitigate things and make sure that we can build the festival. And it can become a landmark festival for the City of Arcata as well, because it is a free festival. And it does support local artists and also brings artists from out of town who are like really excited to play at porch fest for free, because we don't have any money this year. That's it. So we have these things to give to you.
So I have copies of the people who just signed the, um, in the blocked off zone, since I didn't give that to anyone, because it was yesterday that we got those. And then I also have a letter that, um, a Sunnybury homeowner and also performer wrote a letter for us. And then if you guys are curious, I have a bunch of these. This is what was dropped off on people's doors. So, and we're happy to answer any questions about anything, so.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Heel McKnight and I live on Chester Ave. I'm a, I'm also proudly representing from Sunnybury. And I just want to say that this porch fest was so much fun last year. And I understand that we caught some of our neighbors by surprise. And I think the feedback that I've heard was from those people who were caught by surprise. Suddenly a porta potty was going by and maybe being parked in front of their house. And I understand, um, their ire and their anger. And I've been part of the volunteer crew. We have, my wife and I have knocked on sixty-two doors, all up and down Chester Ave and including all the little offshoots. We've been meeting our neighbors and telling them that it's coming. We have heard such positive feedback. People have said this is one of the coolest things about living in Sunnybury. People have volunteered to host when we talked to them about the fact that this was happening again. Um, it is one of the lovely homegrown things and it's a chance for our neighborhood to be really generous. And it's a chance to bring intergenerational groups together. The bands all include people from, you know, from all kinds of different genres and all kinds of ages playing together. The crowd in our front yard was fabulous. We had twenty-year-olds waltzing together. We had eighty-year-olds. We had people in between. Um, it was a really great day and I'm really glad that it's happening again.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And so, Meredith?
Yeah, um, I have, I've gone down like a porch fest rabbit hole since I saw this on the agenda and have seen how amazing it has been in so many different cities. Um, I think that this event is one of the things that makes Arcata, Arcata, and makes Arcata so special. I'm really excited for it. I hope it can grow and bring more people into Arcata. That's our goal is to, I do have like three little questions that hopefully you can answer. So my one concern is trash, a concern about where the porta potties are going and make sure that if they're in front of somebody's house, that they know and approve of that. And, um, as far as amplified music, if the people in the vicinity of the amplification know and are cool with that. Because I think that that was the one thing that I heard, um, a lot of pushback. But otherwise, I love this. I didn't get to go last year. I'm really excited to go this year, so.
So, um,
Zone that we spoke about, and we're gonna have it in front of someone's house, Jen, who's been amazing, and Jen is down. So, um, and then with trash, we're not selling any food or drink. So the trash, like creation should be pretty minimal. With that said, we will have trash cans and recycling, um, and whatever we are required to have that we had previously discussed. So in the map that we came up with, it definitely includes trash. Um, but with that said, there shouldn't be like very much trash.
Yeah, because I know I heard that like just beer cans and whatnot on the street. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it's true. People will bring their own trash. And so we plan to have areas, um, within the blocked off zone that will hopefully help with that. And then, yeah, I don't know. As far as amplified music, we really want to be, like, it's very important to me as part of the vision for porch fest that we continue to stay very diverse musically. And so we don't want to just have a bunch of people playing acoustic guitar on their porches. I want to make sure that we can have amplified music. Um, we definitely, this year, something that we're also doing differently. So we're gonna have a meeting with all the hosts before, um, the event. And so this definitely, I want to make sure that it's a little bit more clear to all hosts that they should talk to their neighbors and make sure that in addition to all of the door hangers that we've been doing, that they are also talking to their neighbors about that sound level. Um, and then also when we put together the schedule, making sure that we don't have two really loud bands really close to each other. Because that was also some feedback that we got, that you'd be standing in the middle of something and be like, kind of overstimulated, so.
No, that's great. And what a great opportunity for Sunnybury to get to know their neighbors. I'd like applaud that as well. So, I'm good.
Thank you.
Kimberly?
Yeah, um, I just, there was some confusion. I was wanting to direct this to the city manager. It seems like the consensus is that there is no conflict of interest, because, um, Kuna is not receiving any monetary compensation. Or get, or yeah, so.
And we have our city attorney on the phone. If you do have a question about conflict, I know that it's up to the council member to make a decision. I personally don't see one, but Nubie is on the line.
So that was my only question. I'm good then. Um, I'm really happy to hear that you're leaning on lessons learned and that you will be addressing those challenges. I love the idea of decentralizing this and, um, bringing music to the masses. Um, Valley West just had their first music in the park, so this is exciting. I'm waiting to see how much it will grow and hopefully it will become a annual event. Thank you for doing such a great job.
Sure you wish it will and probably will. So, uh, go, go on, on to the, my right side?
Sure. Um, I, I do really like the side, in addition to it being a really cool event. I love the side benefit of connecting the community and neighbors to one another. And this is a good way to do that. And, um, and so I think that's just an amazing side benefit. Uh, and I also appreciate the acknowledgement of the concerns and what, you know, what unexpectedly happened last year. Because it's, it is important not to minimize that, so thank you. I think your, I, um, your plans to have a debrief afterwards so that folks can come and, you know, try to work together to even make it better for next time is a wonderful idea. And I, I think you're doing a great job already pivoting from one year to the next. And I would just say, I think we all want this to be successful and, but, you know, the onus of that and continuing it forward is on, is on you guys and, and continuing to engage with the community out there in the city. So thank you for doing this.
Obligatory parking question. No, um, I'm just curious if you guys, did you talk to, because I imagine like probably the greatest parking impacts are gonna be like the shopping center and the middle school. And I know it's Sunday, so the middle schools prob, they probably don't care. But I don't know, did you talk to either of those folks or the owner of the shopping center? And I'm, I'm just worried about folks like getting tickets if they're parked at the shopping center or at Murphy's or something too long and they're not supposed to be. Or bike valet. Ooh, Stacy has the idea. Colin?
Not talk to the owners of the shopping center. I will say that we are tightly connected with Murphy's. And so Murphy's is really excited to promote us and to get porch fest, you know, going. And so I don't think they are super concerned, but I have not talked to anyone at the shopping center. That is not feedback that I'm aware of us getting, that the shopping center parking was, um, crazy. I don't know how many of those businesses are open on Sundays. Um, but it's definitely something we can look into and we can reach out to the businesses and make sure that they don't have any issues with that. And, and we can go forward.
And encourage carpooling.
I will say last year, there was tons of people on bikes and roller skates and, um, walking, but especially bikes. Because you go, the distance between hosts is like actually kind of a lot if you're walking, but kind of perfect for biking. So it would definitely is a huge biking event.
Have you connected with CRTP for maybe a bike valet?
We talked about it last year, but yeah.
I talked to Colin last year about it, um, and it didn't, it didn't work out for some reason. I can't remember why, because we couldn't afford it. I think that was the thing.
It was also mostly, the bike valet is about parking, um, your bike safely. And because everyone was in the street watching the shows, you kind of just stand next to your bike. People didn't really have the need to put their bike anywhere.
But it might be something with the elementary school too, with Sunnybury Elementary, should talk to them about what they could do in their parking lot.
And I, I would think that, um, people that ride their bikes, they would want to move around from one area to another and they would take their bikes with them and so they wouldn't actually need bike parking. That would be my enders, my thought on it.
I'm picturing people dancing with their bike.
Well, they can do that. So I've seen it.
I'm sorry. I'd just like to make a motion to approve the special event permit application from Playhouse Arts for the Sunnybury Porch Fest on October fifth, twenty twenty-five.
And?
And, and Annie, I, I wrote it, but I can't see now because my, and, any amendments?
And, and any, I wrote it, but I can't see now because my, and any amendments the city.
City staff might include in the permit deemed necessary.
So.
Was that a second from White?
Pardon me?
I just didn't hear the second.
A second is from Kimberly.
Thank you.
And so one of the things about Porch Fest, I would think about some of our other neighborhoods that we have that maybe one day you'd want to go out to Visage. And maybe you'd want to, you know, move over to Sunset, you know, there's all these neighborhoods. Yes. Oh, you want money, money. Okay, that's how it's going to work. But I think it's, I'm glad you're able to do it again this year. And thank you very much for coming forward. All those in favor, signal saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So now we're going to go on to oral communications under 12. Oh, on the Porch Fest? Yeah, on Porch Fest, we've taken comments. Did you want to speak on Porch Fest?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people that case Sunnybury is open on Sunday.
Well, I was going to say there's several businesses within the, not the shop, not where Murphy's is, but across the road there is. And I, the hardware store is open, the restaurant is open, and the laundromat for sure that I can think of that are open. And the coffee shop. So, and those would be people they can talk to about it. So I'm going to go back to oral communications. This is, pardon me? Oh, okay. Okay, so the city council values your comments and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to two minutes each and please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Thank you.
I thought we got three minutes at the end, but that's okay. Maybe I won't say it all. Anyway. I'm Ella from Arcata. I'm 92 years old and I remember the Holocaust. Even though I may understand, but I'm disappointed in this resolution regarding the starvation in Gaza. I do understand. Why do you still choose to believe the lies and propaganda of a known terrorist organization when it has been proven over and over again that most of what comes out of Gaza is false? The only people starving in Gaza are the hostages. What about the videos from Gaza recently showing two of the young Israeli hostages captured by Gazans on October 7th being starved to death and one of them forced to dig his own grave? I don't know if he saw those or not. I will bring pictures in next week. I didn't realize we were allowed to bring pictures in. The videos were sent to the parents to torture them. What kind of monstrous barbarians would do this? I realize you know nothing of the history of the many wars between Palestine and Israel. And that's okay. That's okay. You don't have any need to know then. But if you are going to pass a resolution which affects the safety and security of Arcata's Jewish residents, you do need to know the history or don't get involved at all. I remember the Holocaust. I never thought I would see this kind of Jew hatred again. It's not antisemitism, it's Jew hatred, especially in the United States of America. We have freedom of speech and freedom of religion here. It really hurts me that some of you choose to believe the propaganda and lies put out by the Palestinian supporters, especially after October 7th. The worst massacre of the Jewish people since the Holocaust. If you think this new resolution, you're appeasing the rabid mob who were quote called to arms on August 6th, you are mistaken. When you throw a bone to a rabid dog, the dog is still rabid. This kind of hate shown at that meeting is hurtful and frightening.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. So next speaker, please.
Yeah, Paul Patino, Arcata. I just want you to really consider anything you can do to stop funding Israel and stop the genocide in Gaza. So it's pretty black and white now. So it's up to you all to take some action of some sort. And remind Jared Huffman not to vote to fund Israel like he did. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Oh goodness, I'll try and get through this quick. Your favorite rabid dog clown here. I'm here to give public comment in favor of a resolution to make Arcata a sister city with our fellows in Palestine and to join Eureka City Council in sending a letter to Calpers asking them to divest from the Israeli-run genocide. I believe it is incumbent upon us to, as this council has done in the past, put our resources behind our principles. I came to speak to you in March and was not able to. I've seen all sorts of things since then. I'm sure that you guys have. I don't want to say yada yada about blood-soaked concrete and kids with their skin stretched over their ribs. You guys have probably in the last couple of, almost two years now, have had plenty of that thrown at you. This is not a mystery to you and it's not a mystery to me. But sending us up as a sister city with Palestine should not be a mystery either. Go to RPJC website if you don't believe me. I've been out of the struggle for many months, but when I go there, I see victory. I see Palestinian kids more likely than any other children in the world to be orphaned or amputees eating pizza, posing with Disney characters and having paint days. I see them getting the childhood I had, that your kids probably have and that all children deserve. I see food and water delivered to people that I used to watch livestreamed eating pies of livestock feed. That's the spirit of Arcata and the one that justice calls on us to take on now. On the topic of Calpers, send the letter. They have assets worth $469 billion and they will not miss the $50 million that they have up, wrapped up in Israel. I couldn't imagine having an amount this small and tied up in something so horrific and knowingly leaving it there. I've got about 20 seconds left, so I would like to comment on, people say I'm an antisemite because I have this flag on my, on my chest. The same people who are doing this are the same people that massacred Jews in the 40s under Hitler. It's the same villainy, the same hatred. Antisemitism, racial hatred belongs in one place and that's the morgue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jody and I live in Arcata. I'm not here today to talk about Sister City. I'm here actually to address this Gaza resolution proposal. The problem I have with it is that you assume that any humanitarian crisis is the fault of Israel blocking aid to Gaza. You also say that your information comes from the UN Security Council. If that's what you got from the Security Council, then you only listen to the voices for Hamas. Like Mr. Tom Fletcher, who has been caught more than once lying about statistics on genocide and starvation. Now you're basing your opinion on another one of Mr. Fletcher's lies. This time, he actually wrote and signed a report misrepresenting that the conditions for famine and genocide are present in Gaza. The international genocide scholars recently convened to, to see if Israel's really committing a genocide and starvation in Gaza. The problem was that they wanted to change the criteria for being a genocide and a famine and halve it to what it actually is all over the world. 76% of the 500 scholars did not support that resolution and only 24% did. And they deliberately used a flawed process to libel Israel at the behest of Mr. Fletcher, who falsified the report and signed it and presented it to the UN. The scholars who, the 76%, they were not allowed to vote on that. They were excluded from that. So Mr. Fletcher gave a falsified report and that is what you're basing it on. So please get your information straight before you.
Thank you very much. Is there another speaker? Please come forward. Thank you.
My name's CJ. A member of Arcata for possibly too long. Hard, hard acts to follow. Don't want to talk about war. I want to talk about our data, our data here in Arcata and you guys talking about people getting surveys and the fact that, you know, we got a lot of tools coming on hand for us in the science community for analyzing data and for doing stuff with data. And I'm going to advocate that you guys look really squarely at creating a trust for your data. Because when you're going to hand over data to a third party, you don't own it, your civilians don't own it. And so really look into a trust for the data.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Oh yes, please come forward.
Sure, this is the right place, but I've been going to the Transportation Safety Committee for several years. I'm trying to get a stop sign on 11th Street at 11th and Q. And it seems like I'm trying to encourage maybe more commitment to try and help slow down 11th Street. I know they have a lot of good ideas and I don't know, it seems like you guys have some of the financial support. So I'm just trying to get pushed where I can. I live on 11th Street and I see a lot of speeding and trying to get safer for people to ride their bikes along the street. And I walk quite a bit and I see a lot of people driving over. I have the radar that I can watch to see how fast people are actually driving near my house. And I'm really hoping that we can get something motivated to be able to get some safety laws. We've talked about chicanes, we've talked about roundabouts, and I'm just trying to see if something can happen. It's, I feel like I've been talking about this for a long time. And maybe I thought I'd try a different committee. And so I just want to push on trying to get some slow traffic on 11th Street. And we can hopefully get kids riding their bikes to school. I have five charter schools around where we are and within probably a half a mile. And nobody has a school bus. So there's a lot of really, a lot of traffic early morning, parents trying to drop their kids off and then trying to get to work. And so there's a lot of fast traffic as people are trying to pull out of driveways and whatnot. So anyway, I thought I'd try and speak here and see if I can get some traction with the council. So thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that forward. And do we have any, anyone else in the audience that would like to speak that hasn't had an opportunity? So we'll go to Zoom.
Zoom user, please go ahead.
Hello, city council. I'm calling tonight to again ask you to send a letter to Calpers demanding they divest from genocide. Last week, the Eureka City Council voted unanimously to send such a letter. Their city staff found that it would have no fiscal impact. To be clear, we are not asking you to stop payments to Calpers or anything like that. The ask has always been to simply send a letter. This simple act will show you've at least attempted to remain in alignment with your own socially responsible investment clause in your investment policy, something you all signed last September. I'm asking Arcata to leave behind the performative proclamations, which sidebar, in an astounding display of anti-Palestinian racism tonight, the Arcata Zionists can't even stomach that, and take real action. By pressuring Calpers to divest from Israel's genocide of Palestinians, Arcata will be adding our advocacy to a statewide campaign. And if we collectively put enough pressure on Calpers, I believe they will finally take action to divest that blood money and reinvest those funds into more ethical investments that reflect our community values. With over $1.4 billion invested in companies specifically warned by the UN that they risk being complicit in genocide, Calpers can make a meaningful impact. By encouraging Calpers to divest from these companies, Arcata would be adding to the pressure being put on Israel to end their atrocities by other cities, countries, pensions, unions, and other entities from all around the world. We will truly be on the side of humanity and you will put yourselves and the city on the right side of history. Take action. No more words. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
H, please go ahead.
So many of tonight's agenda items would be lovely. I would applaud them if unhoused and transgender Arcatans weren't being thrown under the bus to achieve them. The ends don't justify the means. And if the mayor and the city manager were not actively trying to get trans people fired from their jobs for speaking out passionately on behalf of unhoused residents who are being forced from their homes near these trails, in critical sea level rise zones, off Samoa Boulevard with no place else to go. If getting you to sign a ceasefire resolution and a divestment letter weren't like trying to get blood from a turnip. Ask Calpers to divest from genocide and apartheid. Stop the sweeps. Provide dumpsters, safe parking, and accessible porta potties for your unhoused constituents while you figure out no barrier housing options and improved bus service. The mayor and city manager should also be investigated and censured for retaliating against their own constituents for their comments in this chamber.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Lucas, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lucas. I'm a resident of Arcata. I'm just speaking today to show support for demanding Calpers divest from the genocide. Although just one city, you know, Arcata will be adding to our advocacy to a statewide campaign as everyone stated here and support many individuals and other municipalities. And following the lead and example set by our neighbor here, Eureka, recently, as everyone's already cited. If we collectively put enough pressure on Calpers, I think that they'll finally take action to divest from genocide and reinvest those funds into a more ethical investment that reflect our community's values. Money is power, you know? I mean, with over billions and hundreds of millions invested in property from genocide, Calpers can make a meaningful impact. You know, Caterpillar, Boeing, General Dynamics, Lockheed, Martin, Raytheon, all these companies produce weapons of war used in genocide after genocide, including this one. And by encouraging Calpers to divest from these companies, Arcata will be adding to the pressure being put on Israel to end their atrocities and by other countries, pensions, and entities around the world. We will truly be on the side of humanity. We urge, I mean, I demand you draft a letter to Calpers. It's just a letter. You're only asking them to divest from the death industry. I don't understand how that's even the question of what's right and wrong. I'm hoping to get and expecting an unanimous vote in support of demanding divestment from this, this profiteering of death. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Sarah, please go ahead. Sarah, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I just want to add my, my voice to those who are demanding that you send a letter to Calpers. It's a letter. It is honestly just, it is a letter. You're, we're not asking for anyone to stop payments to Calpers. And if you can't do this simple task, like I, I just, I don't understand, I don't understand how you can sit in those chairs and like represent this city and still have a spine. Like we are funding, we are putting money into fueling genocide right now. There is no debate about that. There is, and, and I just want to also highlight and remind everyone here, after hearing all of the hate and propaganda spewed in this chamber again and again, that under the Geneva Convention, people who are occupied have the legal right to armed resistance. I want all of you right now to just imagine if someone came to your house right now and fucking knocked on your door and told you to get out. They're going to take over your house. What would you do? What would you do? I mean, that's rhetorical question, of course, because you can't ask questions. But you would fight to do everything you could to protect your family. I would hope you would. That's what I would do. And so demonizing that action is just insane. It's insane. I just want to, I just want to remind that everyone here that. And I also want to just ask you to simply send the letter that has already been drafted for you and ask Calpers to divest from genocide. It's so simple. It's so simple. That's all you have to do at this moment in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Amy, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you, Council, for hearing us out once again. Although it does have to have to come once again because it's just really hard to hear the lies and hatred spewed over and over again. When, when the person who talked about the International Association of Genocide Scholars, literally the BBC, NPR, PBS, everyone just published two days ago that they have confirmed that Israel has met the criteria for genocide, which is what we've known since the beginning. And so I just want to clarify that. Please cite your sources. Yeah, it's, it's all over the place. And I, I've been sitting and trying to understand like what the reticence has been to passing this letter. And I think like, I don't know if it's, you know, if we say, if you say now that yes, this is a genocide and then you have to like sit through the fact that for the past two years you have been ignoring it. Like, I feel like that does feel heavy and that does feel like a lot. But it's literally never too late to take a stand. It's never too late to choose the right side, to, to stand up for what's right, to stand up for our humanity. It's, it's heartbreaking every single day to know that we're going about our daily lives while these atrocities are being committed. And we don't have to look very far to see that kind of behavior when we look at what's happening to our unhoused community members, when we look at the way that we callously treat one another. So please send the letter to divest. Please dig deep in your heart and connect with your values because I know.
So let's not call out anyone individually, please. You need to speak to the full council. And thank you very much for your comments. Person on Zoom, please.
Alice, please go ahead.
I have so many thoughts about which statement I can make to appeal to the council to get full support for standing up against occupation, against the genocidal slaughter of thousands of regular people in Palestine, whether they be children, men, women, freedom fighters. How do we get you council members to see that another resolution is just that? Another resolution, more empty words for you to put on paper with no tangible action. It's been almost two years of empty words and no action. And I have to wonder why that is. Is it because this council is made up of people who are white supremacists? Want to protect white feelings instead of brown bodies? Not wanting to be a sister city with Gaza because Hamas is designated as a terrorist organization by the US is a statement a white supremacist would make. The US government, which I deem a terrorist state, had Nelson Mandela on the terrorist watch list until 2008. Nelson fucking Mandela. These white supremacists on the city council want to get back to business as usual. There is no business as usual in a genocide. These white supremacists don't want to pressure CalPERS to divest in a way that could harm the fiscal health of their city and the stability of their employee retirements. You are showing us your white supremacist membership card. You are putting money over actual living people. The city of Eureka held a special meeting last Tuesday in which they brought forth a brief and direct letter requesting CalPERS immediately divest from their unethical financial investments, including weapons manufacturing, shipping, logistics, and fuel companies that facilitate human rights violations around the world, including ongoing military occupation and genocide of the Palestinian people.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Ronnie, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ronnie Colby. Good evening, Mayor Stillman and Council. I'm here to support not only the Gaza sister city proposal, but more immediately, council sending a letter to CalPERS encouraging their divestment from companies financially supporting Israel's genocide of the Palestinian people, just like the Eureka City Council sent. I support sending this letter because I support human liberation from war, racism, and religious oppression. I support water, food, medical care, and life for the suffering children of Gaza City who should not have to suffer the consequences of their father's actions. Consider Doctors Without Borders' statement on their website. Quote, "Doctors without Borders teams are witnessing a genocide in Gaza committed by Israeli forces. We see the impacts of mass killings, forced displacement, destruction of vital civilian infrastructure, a punishing siege cutting off access to food, water, medicines, and other humanitarian supplies. Israeli authorities are systematically destroying the conditions necessary for Palestinian life in Gaza. No one is spared." End quote. From the United Nations Human Rights Office of the High Commission, quote, "This is one of the most ostentatious and merciless manifestations of the desecration of human life and dignity." End quote. This isn't a partisan issue, nor is it antisemitism. Please engage with the raw footage of what's happening to Palestinians right this very second. Encouraging the CalPERS divestment from companies supporting Israel's genocide sends a message that even a child can understand. When you spend a dollar, you are saying, "Do that again." When you take away that dollar, you're making it clear that you do not want what they're selling. Please do what we as humane citizens of the world can do from afar. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Raifri, please go ahead. And just to let you know how many hands, just one, we have six hands left.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm here to share my support for signing a letter to CalPERS and being a sister city with ARCAD. As the US and Israel have played with deporting and ethnically cleansing the people of Gaza to Libya, Sudan, and Somalia, I think it is important that you support the issue as they continue to target the population. Many international organizations, such as Humans Right Wash, spacing the other one, and Israeli one of Batez have reported genocide in Gaza. Oh, and, God, it was on my tongue, but I forgot, but whatever. What was I going to say? Oh, yeah, have supported genocide in Gaza. I think it's, yeah, it would be a great duty to not sit by, as one person put it. Don't make the same mistakes as Eureka did in 1885, where they ethnically cleansed the Chinese population. I think it's important that you guys say strong and do not support this genocide that is taking place. And also on the Mr. Fletcher comment, I don't know what sources she got, but the UN's genocide case is still the same since the 1948. Also, he made a statement that he subtracted back. He claimed that in 48 hours, something like a thousand babies would die. It's been corrected. He, the UN, he said that, now the corrected statement is that by 2020.
Okay, thank you. And do we have, how many more people do we have on Zoom?
There are five hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Amy, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm calling in to ask that you take one simple step forward in honoring your own socially responsible investment policy. This is not a complicated ask, nor is it without precedent. In fact, you are all fully aware that your city council counterparts in Eureka voted unanimously in favor of sending a letter to CalPERS asking that they divest from companies profiting off of Israel's illegal, amoral war of annihilation against the indigenous occupied people of Palestine. The city of Eureka found no fiscal impact whatsoever associated with sending such a letter. The city of Eureka followed their constituents' overwhelming demands that they honor their duty as public servants to listen to the voice of the people. It is utterly disingenuous of you to continue to ignore the stream of voices begging you to show up and take action. If you continue to pretend confusion or pretend to be conflicted about sending a mere letter, please convene a special urgent council meeting to eliminate any remnants of the socially responsible investing clause that you clearly do not give a fuck about. You could stick to the Pledge of Allegiance and just ditch the land acknowledgements. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Sheri, please go ahead.
Eureka passed their BDS resolution because the mob demanded it and no one on their council appears to have any skin in the game. So they went with what the crowd asked for. We won't have a BDS resolution in ARCAD because there are people here who have studied this war, this situation extensively, and we bring facts to the discussion. Amnesty International, Doctors Without Borders, and Human Rights Watch changed their definition of genocide to fit this war, which was started by Hamas. A genocide is legally defined in the 1948 Convention on the prevention and punishment of the crime of genocide. Genocide requires intent. If Israel intended to commit genocide, they had the capability to do so within a couple days after October 7. Why would they send their own soldiers into Gaza, where terrorists dress as civilians to risk their own lives? This issue is not germane to city business, but there are several issues that local people could use a lot of help with. Perhaps take an unhoused friend or a couple into your home and give them shelter and food. Or perhaps prepare to provide assistance if ICE arrives in Humboldt. As one representative in the DNC Resolutions Committee last week said, to paraphrase, "Our country is falling apart," and here we are discussing this issue? Really? Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Sarai, please go ahead.
Everyone, I'm calling to ask that this council send a letter to CalPERS asking that they divest from, oh my God, I am fuming. Oh my God, I'm fuming. First of all, the space and time that we are taking up to speak about Palestine, it is reflective of the humanity that is going to be necessary in order to keep us from die, like, falling further and further and further into the fascist state that we're experiencing. I'm super down for a festival to be happening in Sunnybry, but this council literally took the concerns over someone placing a porta potty in front of someone's house. That is a big deal. Now imagine if somebody takes your house, murders your children and your family, and then denies what is happening to you over and over and over again, claiming that their feelings are more important than the lives being lost through these atrocities. Imagine, this council took very seriously the need for pickleball, for more parking at pickleball, because we want safe access to the spaces that folks are using in the, in the sport, in the sport. That's a whole different thing we could talk about is pickleball. But we find that to be something important to talk about. Is that what you're saying we should be speaking more to? Because the folks being murdered in Palestine and by every extension, the genocides occurring around the world will eventually make it to our doorsteps. Will eventually make it to the, what we are experiencing. We're just, we are just able to send our help, able to send our voices, able to send our letters. People in Spain have taken off on the flotilla, taken off.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, please. I believe this might be the last one.
There were two more hands and then during that public comment portion, one more hand went up.
Okay, thank you.
Ramira, please go ahead.
I, I wanted to also offer my support for the city of ARCAD to send a letter to CalPERS saying they should divest from any companies supporting the Zionist entity's genocide against Palestinians. Yeah, and seconding what everyone else has said, the Eureka City Council has already voted to do this, which is the bare minimum again. It's like, we keep having to beg y'all to do what is the bare minimum of what we should be doing. And we're allowing Nazis to continue to just throw up their hate when Palestinians in our community are faced by racists at schools, at universities, at the farmer's market, everywhere. There's so many fucking racists in ARCAD. And it's probably y'all too sitting up there in council considering how little you're doing. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. And one more speaker do you have? Two more?
I have one, there is one more hand from what I announced the six hands earlier in the time that lapsed between now and then, and an additional hand raised. So I'll go at your discretion if we take the last two hands.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tamara, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm here, I'm here today to speak from my mind and from my heart and from my experience as I speak to you from Israel. I strongly oppose the city council allowing loud pressure and aggressive voices to shape the discourse of our community in this way. Right now, as of today, families are still living in agony because of their loved ones are held hostages by Hamas. People are being tortured, starved, and threatened. And yet we're talking about creating a bond with a very group responsible for this. Does this make sense? Hamas is not a government we can be negotiating with a good face. They rule Gaza with terror, violence, and oppression. Their charter calls for the destruction of Jews on October 7th, 2003, prove that those words were not empathy, they were not empathy rhetoric. They are guided for action, kidnapping, massacres, rocket attacks, and terror against civilians. And they continue to do this action today. Just yesterday, I visited the areas affected by the October 7 massacres, including the Nova Falls site and many kibbutzim very close to Gaza. It was incredibly moving and difficult experience, but I was there to bear witness to what happened that day. Seeing the aftermath firsthand, feeling the weight of the loss and suffering, made me painfully clear why creating any kind of sister city relationship with Gaza would be morally impossible. A sister city is not a natural. It is recognition, a partnership, it sends a message, the terrorists is acceptable. How did it feel for the Jewish resident of ARCAD to know that their tax dollars could be used even indirectly to support an organization whose mission to do in Hillary?
Thank you. And that ends public comment.
One more.
One more?
Yeah. Rick, please go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Rick. I'm a representative with Students for a Democratic Society. We are a national student-led activist organization. We would like to voice strong support for sending this letter to CalPERS for divestment. It is the bare minimum that can be done. As many have pointed out, it's already been done by Eureka. It is very easy. It would be a very simple thing for the council to do. And it's really important, you know, we just had someone, you know, talking about how we are supporting terrorism or whatever. But there was no Israel before 1948. And when the Nakba began, you know, they killed thousands of civilians, at least 13,000 civilians, burned 500 villages, displaced 800,000 people. And since October 7th, we've seen just thousands and thousands of more people massacred. We've seen forced starvation. We've seen entire cities completely leveled. This is something that has been livestreamed on social media. This is not something that's hidden. This is something that's very easy to find. This is very easy to access. At least 63,000 Palestinians have died since October in 2023. And of those deaths, the majority were civilians and children. And those are moderate estimates, right? We don't even know the exact number of fatalities at this point, but it is. We don't even know the exact number of fatalities at this point, but it is horrible what is happening there. They have stopped civilian ships trying to bring, bring food supplies in international waters. That is illegal. They've been committing war crimes left and right. We have to do something wherever we are. This is not something we can turn a blind eye to, because if we do, it'd be the same as turning a blind eye to the Holocaust in Germany, in Nazi Germany. These are the same historic times. This is a mere reflection of that. So what you do today reflects what you would do in the face of the Nazis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That's it.
I assume we have another one?
One, one more hand did just go up.
And then I think this will be our last speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Stillman. Carpani, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, sorry, I'm just getting on, but everything that Rick said, I cannot, I can say no more except to expound, just to say, you must send that letter to CalPERS. You must do it. How can you not? The numbers are growing, the devastation is becoming worse, if you can, if you can even imagine that. I don't understand how you cannot understand that this is your duty. It's your duty. It's by the law, it's your duty to do everything that you can to stop this illegal genocide, occupation, apartheid behavior. I mean, I don't know what else I can say. I, I didn't expect to speak tonight, but I, I feel like, even though I'm speaking to a wall that is not listening and has no intention, I feel like I at least have to come and say it once again. You must do this. You cannot not do this.
Okay, thank you. That concludes that for this evening, our oral communications. And so now we go on to council reports. Of course, one of the things I would like to mention, and before we go into it, is the Friday Night Market, which is coming up this Friday. And the City of Eureka this year decided not to do a Friday Night Market on, in September. So Humboldt May suggested we try it in Arcata for the month of September, and we'll have three Fridays, and one Friday will be for the North Country Fair preparations for that event for that weekend. So we, the North, the Friday Night Market will be, starts at 5:00 and ends at 8:00. So now, who would like to go next? And I just wanted to bring that up first. Okay, Sarah, you go next.
Just a couple updates from my committees. RCEA, we had a really extensive list that was added as an amendment to our packet, but you can probably find it online if you're interested. But HR1, or as it's known as the one big ugly, I mean beautiful, bill, it caused a lot of changes to programs that are federally funded and incentives and tax credits for things like EVs, solar, and other energy, like efficiency projects, both for residential and commercial uses. Pretty much most of those were probably extended out to like 2032, 2036, like, they're all ending, like, literally this month or in the next coming six months, pretty much. So if you were thinking about buying an EV and hoping to get a tax credit, you gotta do that by September 30th of this year. If you were hoping to upgrade your home, you have to do that by, like, you know, February 2026. So it's changed, they cut them all the, all the programs, and RCEA has more information on that if you are interested in learning about it. Also, RCEA is about to launch the next round of bike vouchers, but I hear there's already, like, a waiting list of 1,000 people, so if you're probably not already on that waiting list, you're not gonna get one. So that's been really successful. Also, just to add, Equity Arcata will also be at the Friday Night Market, and we'll have a booth and be there, kinda just trying to, you know, again, liaise with the students and welcome them to the community and show them what they have to offer. We also had some new members join us on the advisory board at our last meeting from Humboldt Area Foundation and College of the Redwoods, so it's really exciting to be kind of expanding the folks that we have on that advisory board and getting more feedback from different community partners on how Equity Arcata can be successful. And then I know probably some of our other council members will talk about this, because I think we all had the opportunity to attend some of the events for Sanctuary Day. I guess that was just, no, not last weekend, two weekends ago. I had the chance to be with some Equity Arcata folks at the Plaza and speak, and I know Stacy and Meredith and others were at the garden, I saw people out riding bikes. So if you joined on kind of any part of that journey between Target, the marsh on the trail, the garden, the plaza, as, you know, they choose the investments for us, we don't get to have that choice of portfolio. And so it would be really cool if we could uphold that policy. And so this first step is being able to advocate for, to CalPERS. I, again, Brown Act prevents us from all talking about these kind of things. I have been speaking to ICE Mayor White, and she looked at what I had written up and has given me some feedback, and hopefully would maybe support getting that on the agenda. I've also sent it to the city manager to, to look at, and so that exists. And, you know, we, we've talked about Palestine on this agenda before, all the way back in November of 2023 was the first time. I supported a ceasefire then when we didn't pass it. I supported a ceasefire when we did pass it in March. I continue to support divesting from Cal, advocating for CalPERS to divest. And, and just, you know, and I know us up here as women, we get our intelligence insulted a lot. We don't understand budgets, numbers are scary for us, we don't understand city planning, how can I know how a fire department works? Just to remind the public, we are not ignorant, we understand history wherever we fall, but specifically, I was a history major in college and a religious studies minor with an emphasis in modern decolonization. So that, just that, and I will leave it there.
Thank you. I, obviously I won't say much, too much into this because it's not on the agenda, but I know you, you did indicate to me that you were working on something, so now I know what it is. And I was going to actually reach out to you about something a little more general in that, so I'll just say, I don't support investing in lots of things, including war, weapons, for-profit prisons, encampments, detention centers, none of that. So if we are able to draft something that includes that wide variety, and I think it needs to be global, and I'm not, just because I, I think it happens in lots of places, so I'm down to talk and focus on that. I think that we could actually make a difference quicker than we could push CalPERS to divest from any of the things in that list that we mentioned. So if we're talking about really wanting to help people, I think that's how we help people. And so off of Sarah's thing there, I attended my Humboldt County Association of Governments, and we had a prena presentation from HCD, which was interesting. I'm also, that's a, we're talking about our housing element, and I'm working with some folks in our community to try to help get a better grasp on how we might be able to be successful in that. I attended our homeless services meeting, which was, which was a big gathering of folks working on lots of things to support our houseless folks in our community. Also, I attended the CalCity's Redwood Region Meeting in Fortuna with Mayor Stillman, and was in, one of the speakers at the Sanctuary Day Garden Events for, and was really happy to be a part of that. Thank you.
I do have to mention that as far as the League of Cities, you're now going to be the chair or president, or whatever it is for the region, for our region.
No, just for our region.
Our region. She is.
Vice President anymore? First vice president.
She moved up. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'll go down over here. You want to start, Kimberly, and then we'll go to Meredith. We'll go in order.
So as Councilmember Schaefer mentioned, that we had been in communication, and I personally am, I spoke about it before, I can get behind a CalPERS divestment letter. As previously mentioned, I'm not for war profiteering, human violation rights, detention centers. My feedback was very similar to Stacy's, is that I wanted it to address more on a global. And I'm gonna move on from that. I had the honor, along with Councilmember Matthews, to emcee our 13th ni, 39th Annual Eye Block Party, annual fundraiser for the Arcata Campob, butcher, I'm so tired, I apologize. Camopa, help me, Sarah. Camopa, there you go, I said it a million times, and tonight, yeah. So the Sister City Project in Niwawa, not Niwawa, I know, I'm very tired. I attended my monthly Redwood Region Economic Development Commission as the city liaison. Each month, we do get to hear from other jurisdictions and what's going on in their communities. It's super exciting to hear of all of the wonderful things that each city and jurisdiction is doing. I've attended the Humboldt Equity Consortium today, heard about all the upcoming events for Queer Humboldt, as well as Eureka City Schools. KUNA, Comunidad Unida del Norte de Arcata, or Community United of North Arcata, held a free produce farm stand this past Saturday and another one yesterday. Free produce, we're doing these now twice monthly. Hopefully, we'll do it every week, all are welcome. Also, come join KUNA for an evening of Thai cuisine at this month's Free What's Cooking Culinary Arts Program, that's Saturday, September 6th at 6:00 PM. We were gonna be, we have been doing them on Friday, but we definitely didn't want to conflict with our Friday Night Market. Each month, a guest chef or cook offers their service pro bono teaching essential culinary skills, including menu, menu planning, food nutrition, healthy eating habits, and it culminates with a free community meal. There will be vegan options as well. The KUNA Resilient Hub is located at 4700 Valley East, it's on the corner of Valley East and Hallam Drive. Don't show up at the Comfort Inn, as many do. And finally, just some quick housekeeping issues. A community member who speaks often at our meetings reached out, asking if KUNA was receiving funds from the city. So I just want to clarify that in the past, I have recused myself, because as KUNA coordinator from city, you know, and being on city council, we, when we had KUNA-related activities, I have recused myself because of the ARPA funding from the city for various programs, including the monthly Valley West Clean the Sidewalk event. But all of that, those ended in November. Additionally, KUNA was asked to implement Humboldt County's first participatory budget process, where the Valley West community got to help decide how public money was spent in their community, and that implementation process has also, also has ended. So just to be transparent, I am not recusing myself, because we currently do not receive any money from the City of Arcata, and that's all I've got.
Okay, one other thing, Alex. There's a chamber mixer tomorrow, and it does at Health Sport in Arcata here, out on their patio, and it starts at 5:30. So you should go to that if you want to hang out.
Okay, so I would like to tell you all that I went to HTA, Humboldt Transit Authority, today, and they reported that they have 600 students that are riding the shuttle between the new dorms and campus between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and the shuttle runs every 15 minutes, and it's been very successful. We also have the week without driving, which is September 29th through October 5th, and there are approximately 36,000 people in the county without a driver's license, many of them, I'm sure, are very young and can't get one yet, and many of those with licenses do not drive. The other thing is that North State Transit is coming right along and should be announced in November. It will be the opportunity to reach the Bay Area by public transit, and also you can go to Redding and to Crescent City, and it will pretty much match the time going to Ukiah as you would in driving a car. I did attend the I Street Block Party, but I just worked a booth. And I went to the Wastewater Meeting on D Street Community Center last Thursday, it was well-attended, and there were many very good ideas and suggestions. So one of the questions that people asked after that is, will they see the comments and what are the next steps? And also, one comment was that wastewater systems do affect the climate, and they're wondering if there would be anything around a committee that the city would consider that would deal with climate, the climate, and someone from Wastewater might be involved. I met with the Red Cross Northern California Director about disaster preparedness a couple weeks ago. I attended the meeting with Providence about how they will cope with the elimination of various healthcare programs and, and that are being suggested by our president, and the room was full of providers. And this is something I would like to really emphasize and see how we might even get it on our website. At Humboldt Area Foundation, we have the Arcata Trust Fund, and the Arcata Trust Fund, you can donate to it when you travel, if you feel like you want to offset some of your carbon. And that, in the past, that was used for matching other grants that we had in the City of Arcata. So I just wanted to put that out there for anyone that feels like they want to deal with their carbon footprint, they can make a donation to the Arcata Forest Fund in any amount at the Humboldt Area Foundation. So that's all I have, and I just want to go on to future dates of meetings, and we have scheduled a joint study session with the Board of Directors of the Arcata Fire District to receive the Standards of Coverage Report on September 10th, 2025, at 3:00 in the afternoon, and it's in the Arcata Station Classroom at 631 Ninth Street. There is no closed session, there are no closed session reports, and we're now adjourned at 9:25.